All right. We are back. Roll call, please.
Vera.
Here.
Lutz.
Here.
Dingfelder.
Here.
Carlson, Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Here.
And Maniscalco.
Here. All right, next up is item number 12.
Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination.
Okay, I'm sorry, did you want to swear in any witnesses?
Oh, if you're going to speak on 12 to 21, which concludes the agenda, please raise your right hand and we'll swear you in and we'll get it out of the way now.
Do you swear or affirm your oath of trust, the whole trust, and not just one trust?
I do.
I do.
All right. Item number 12.
Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination. Item number 12 was file number REZ 20-63 for the property located at 501 North Howard Avenue, 2113 West Gray Street, and 2114 and 2118 West Carmen Street. The request before you is going from PD and RS 50 to PD for office, medical, and business professional uses. I'll defer to the Planning Commission for their report and please return to me so I can finish mine.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. David Hay with your Planning Commission staff. I have been sworn, if we could share my screen, please?
Yes, sir, we can see you.
Hopefully, you're all seeing my screen.
Yes.
This case is REZ 20-63. We're located in the Central Tampa Planning District, more specifically, the West Tampa Urban Village and the North High Park neighborhood. The subject site is located within proximity to transit. The closest transit stop is one block to the north of the site on North Howard Avenue. The closest public recreational facility is the Beeler Brothers Park, which is within one-fourth of a mile to the northwest of the subject site. And the subject site is located within a Level C evacuation zone. Here we have the aerial. You can see the subject site. It actually contains three separate parcels. This is West Gray Street on the south. We have North Howard Avenue to the west. This is the Brian Glazer Community Center, Jewish Community Center. Howard Avenue, there's a mix of office uses and some residential uses scattered throughout. And then, once you get off of North Howard, it's predominantly single-family detached with some duplexes or older multifamily. Here we have the future land use map. The site actually has two future land use designations. The west side in the red along North Howard Avenue is the community Mixed Use 35. And then, the eastern portion, the majority of the site, is within that residential 10, which is the tan color here. The Brian Glazer Jewish Community Center and south of the subject site in this pink is the community Mixed Use 35, future land use category. That's also prevalent up on West Cast Street, one block to the north. And then, we have some residential 20 within these browns to the south of the site. The proposed commercial structure will be in a portion of the site, this is the red here, designated that community Commercial 35. And the parking will be within the portions of the residential 10. So, the parking area is larger than the structure. Given the commercial development pattern on this portion of North Howard Avenue, the Planning Commission staff has determined that the request would not be out of character with this surrounding area consisting of office uses and other light commercial uses. The City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan recognizes North Howard Avenue as both a transit emphasis and mixed-use corridor. There's specific policy language within the comp plan dealing with both of those designations. The plan supports development along mixed-use quarters that promote redevelopment patterns and streetscape improvements that transform the visual and physical character of these quarters. The proposed office is placed close to the public sidewalk along North Howard Avenue, and parking is in the rear of the building. And the entrance to the building is oriented with North Howard Avenue, which is consistent with this policy direction regarding mixed-use quarters. The planned development is proposing a parking lot on the north side of the alley. That's here, just on the south side of Carmen, which separates parking from -- it's that alley which separates the parking area from the office. Per land use policy 15.3.5, the design of parking bays within parking lots should facilitate safe and convenient walking to building entrances. Since there are no crosswalks provided within the parking area and there is no connection to the sidewalk on Carmen Street, it is unclear how the policy is met. To ensure consistency with land use policy 15.3.5, the Planning Commission staff would strongly encourage the applicant between first and second reading to provide better sidewalk integration within the site. The Planning Commission staff presented these concerns to the applicant in the Development Review Committee report, and those concerns were not addressed. In conclusion, the planned development overall is comparable and compatible with the commercial development pattern on this portion of North Howard Avenue. While the applicant attempts to address the mixed-use corridor policies, the Planning Commission staff again would request that that sidewalk issue be dealt with between first and second reading. And based on those considerations, the Planning Commission staff does find proposed planned development consistent with the provisions of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Councilman Dingfelder.
David, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for your presentation, this Councilman Dingfelder. So, just to clarify, looking at the map that we're looking at, the orange, the orange color is residential 10?
Correct.
And, and I see a lot of parcels there. I can't, I can't see the houses, obviously, but I see a lot of what looks to be perhaps 50-foot, single-family parcels, both on Gray and on Carmen, pretty close to the site or immediately adjacent to the park, to the proposed parking lots.
Here.
Right, and across the street on Carmen. Up, yeah, right. So, is there, is there any commercial intrusion along Carmen Street along, up there, or along the rest of Gray?
My under, there is vehicular access points on Gray. I do not believe there's any on Carmen. I don't have the site plan in front of me. I think they're gaining access to that northern portion of the street.
I'm not talking about access, David. I'm talking about structures or parking lots or any other types of commercial intrusion into that residential 10 area.
Well, typically, Councilman, we, typically, we don't consider if there's not a vehicular access point that it's a commercial intrusion. You see a lot of parking areas, as our quarters become more intensive, they sometimes have to provide, because we have required parking in the Land Development Code, that sometimes they have to look at the residential lots behind it. I believe some of these, especially the ones on Gray, are already utilized for parking. But since there's not an access point on Carmen, we do not, because they could adequately screen that, so then typically you wouldn't have any commercial traffic on Carmen or visual because of that buffer. And then, on Gray Street on the south side, you've got community Mixed Use 35 that actually goes back to Westland Avenue, so this is --
What I'm referring to specifically is the orange-colored area. Is there, to your knowledge, is there any structures or parking lots that are in that orange area?
I believe there's some parking and some structures currently.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. Mr. Manassi.
Thank you, Chair. Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination. Again, this is item number 12, file number REZ 20-63. The applicant is proposing a rezon on the property at 501 North Howard Avenue, 2113 West Gray Street, and 2114 and 2118 West Carmen Street from planned development, which is currently approved under PD File ZO5-130, ordinance 2005-287, medical office use and residential single-family 50, RS 50, to the planned development to allow for the development of an expanded parking area to the north and the addition of business professional office use to the existing 7,069 square foot medical office use. The property currently contains a medical office use and the existing signage and parking will remain. The .99 acre property is located on the northeast intersection of North Armenia Avenue and West Gray Street. And the subject site is surrounded by residential and commercial uses to the north in the commercial-intensive CI and zoning district and residential single-family 50 zoning districts. Office and residential uses to the south in the planned development and residential multifamily 16 zoning district and residential uses to the east in the RS 50 zoning district. The JCC is to the west, and that was for day, approved as a PD through, for daycare, preschool, recreational facility, commercial private, I'm sorry, private commercial recreational facility, place of religious assembly and public cultural facility. And that's, again, in that west area. The PD setbacks per the site plan are north zero feet, south 10 feet, west four feet, and east 200 feet. The maximum building height of the existing building is 35 feet. And the required parking, based on the most intensive use as medical offices, 42 parking spaces, and they're providing 81 spaces. Item, or page number four in your staff reports goes into 27-136 for the purpose, and staff does outline some descriptions for those items. And then, obviously, be wary of the Section 27-139-4 for waivers and the criteria for consideration through the Site Plan Control District. There is a historic landmark structure within 1,000 feet of the subject property. It's the Fort Homer Hester Lee Armory at 522 North Howard Avenue under ordinance 2006-312, ordinance date 12/5/2006. There are site plan modifications that would be required between first and second reading of this petition. Overall, just to show you on the site plan, and maybe, I know David was alluding to some of it as well, there is no access to the north portion. The existing medical office is here. The existing parking lot being here. What the applicant is proposing is this new lot to be combined, all of these lots, into one PD with that use of business professional office as well as medical office, but then have this expanded parking area up here. As far as the aerial, I was trying to look for it, Councilman Dingfelder, as you were asking David, to see if there were any other parking lots in the area. But through this, through this PD rezoning, they, they can use this as a consideration, being compatible with this rezoning request. Let me show you some pictures. So, this is the face I took of North Howard. This is the existing office structure. And there's the existing parking lot. This would be going to the east here. And again, the parking lot showing that buffer wall. That's between the existing parking lot and then the closest residential to this.
You're off, you're off the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should be able to see that. That's right for me. To the south here, so this is the structure that you see right here. It's a single-family residential, and you can see there is a solid concrete wall there. To answer your question, to the south here, we'll have some pictures in a moment. I'll show you the multifamily that's there. This is, I'm sorry, I'm pulling it off-screen. This is the existing, it's an alleyway, and it might be better shown on this little vicinity here. As you can see, there is an alleyway right here, and then it goes north. This is the one going east. This is the structure to the north, single-family currently, and it would be outlined here in red. This is where the expanded area is for that parking that the applicant is proposing. And just to bring up, since the previous hearing, this was continued for the applicant to go back to Historic Preservation to get a determination on that property, the 2118 West Carmen Street. This is the memorandum from Historic Preservation. It's stating, "While Mr. Tokely is a very respected and living poet who is active in his field, the property does not satisfy the criteria as established for historic significance by the City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, Section 27, 257A, 1 to I through IV." The motion was approved with a vote of 600. And I just wanted to put that on the record, because there was a lot of discussion about this structure being demolished. And again, this is where that expanded parking will be. I tried to get a picture of the existing parking lot and then the single-family here to the west. This is to the north. There are newly homes being built. And that would be north of Carmen Street. And this is to the south. You can see it's more of a multifamily. Again, the budding neighbor, single-family. And then, the JCC to the west. And this is the budding neighbor to the east of, this would be on Carmen Street where the parking lot would be, the expanding parking area, single-family home. And that's just that alleyway that's going north, as you can see here, through the property. With that being said, the Development Review and Compliance Staff has reviewed the application, and we do find the request consistent with the City of Tampa Land Development Code. In the event the City Council does approve the request as well as the waivers, there are three being requested on page one of your staff report. The report outlines additional modifications to be completed between first and second reading of the ordinances. Now, I will say, before I turn it over to the agent, that the agent has requested some possible changes that he addressed with the neighborhood concern. I'll let him go into more detail with it. Staff did take a look at them, though, however, so if it is something that the agent wants to go forward with, which would reduce some waivers, these would still be minor modifications between first and second reading that can be accomplished. And staff is available for any questions you may have.
Councilman Citro.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Manassi, for this square footage of this building, how many parking spaces are required?
That would be 42 parking spaces. And the proposal before you, minus any changes that the agent made or requests or show, would be 81 spaces provided.
How many square foot is the building, if you know offhand?
I'm sorry. 7,069 square feet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manassi.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions? Councilman Dingfelder.
Just a follow-up to Mr. Citro's question. So, how many spaces are there currently in the existing lot, the southern, the southern lot?
I would have to count them, sir, unless Jonathan Scott with Transportation would know off the top of his head by looking at the application. But the existing lots are just as, to show you on the site plan, would be right here.
Right. What I'm trying to figure out, and I think that's where Mr. Citro was headed before, was, was, does the existing lot satisfy the needs of the, of the building?
Do you want to answer that?
In terms of, in terms of the requirement, you know, the requirement.
I know it's not my turn, but...
It's an existing building, and it, an existing building and an existing lot. So, so that's what I'm a little confused about.
Mr. Dingfelder, we have a presentation just to address that particular point.
And in the meantime, sir, I can have Jonathan take a look at the site plan and get that answer, as well as staff's side, so that way we can do that.
All right, come back to us afterwards. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. This is David Mechanic, 305 South Boulevard, Tampa, Florida. I promise this is my last one this evening.
You promise?
I promise. We have some documents to enter into the record, and they'll be referred to during the presentation. I have with me virtually Randy Cohen, who will do a presentation both with respect to the parking demand as well as the question about compatibility of the, the expansion of the parking lot for the eye clinic. Just a few housekeeping items. We, we do agree with the, all the changes that the staff have requested for the site plan. I'd like to clarify, the only change we asked Ryan to make was we are eliminating waivers two and three. We, we initially asked for a waiver of the buffer on the east and west property lines from 15 feet to 10 feet. However, in response to some concerns with the neighbors, we've eliminated the waiver request and so that the buffers are at code at 15 feet on both, both property boundaries. It, it causes the, the requested parking area to be reduced by 19%. And Randy will give you the specific numbers on that. Also, waiver two then gets eliminated, because with the increased buffer, we're able to plant replacement trees in that buffer area. We don't need to pay, pay into the tree bank. One other just item that, that Ryan did discuss, I'd like to go into it slightly more detail. We went, we applied at the Historic Preservation Commission to determine whether or not the house at 2118 West Carmen was historic. We, we went to a notice public hearing on December 1st. And that was, by the way, that's the same notice that the neighbors get for a rezoning. It's a 200-foot, 250-foot radius surrounding the subject property. As Ryan just mentioned, the Historic Preservation Commission determined that the house did not meet the criteria for historic status under the City of Tampa criteria. I would also just note that no, no one from the public attended that hearing. At this point, I would like to introduce Randy. I hope he's here virtually somewhere. And he, I'd like him to speak to the parking demand and the compatibility issues.
Good evening, Randy Cohen. Hope you can hear me?
Yes, were you sworn in, sir?
That's what I was going to say. My screen was not turned on by staff until after the swearing, so I need to be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm your oath of trust, the whole trust, and not just one trust?
I do. And if I would, I'd like to share my screen, if that's possible. Okay, thank you. Want to talk first about the site plan, just to describe what's going on?
Wait, we don't, we don't see it yet.
As Mr. Mechanic indicated, we're increasing the buffer on the east side of the property by 50%, and on the west side of the property by 50%. That results in our parking spaces being reduced by 19%.
We don't see your screen yet, sir.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Did you share it?
Oh, there's a, that's new to me. Okay, we have it here.
Now we hear, now we see it.
I'm sorry. This is a colorized version of the site plan. The parking lot that seems to be the most in question is this one up here. The two waivers we're removing would require that this buffer be increased by 50% all the way down the site, as well as this buffer over here to the west. Our setback from Carmen Street is the average of the setbacks of homes in this general area, so we're maintaining that frontage as well. These changes do reduce our parking, additional parking by 15%, by 19%, excuse me, from 82 spaces to 71 spaces. With this design, we're able to keep both of the grand trees that are currently on the property that form part of the front yard of the house that's been the subject of discussion. We do provide all of the screening and buffering in code. We are consistent with the overlay, the West Tampa overlay itself. Moving from this a little bit to answer Councilman Dingfelder's question, the original proposal was for 82 spaces. That's been reduced to 71 spaces. The total spaces existing on the site today are 35 spaces, and they expand and extend in this area back into the neighborhood. Moving on, we have done substantial work on parking to demonstrate the demand and need for this. We've looked at all of the records of January 2019 through February of 2020. But before I get into that, I'd like to show you a photograph. This was taken at 10:00 AM this morning. This is the parking lot adjacent to the building. Every parking stall is filled. The northern parking row adjacent to the alley, every parking space is full. This are the remaining two spaces of the existing parking lot. They look full. There's actually three spaces that are not occupied. The rest are full. Substantial parking along Gray Street. Substantial parking right here on Gray as well. This is actually a patient, an elderly gentleman. And I will tell you, being an eye clinic in this particular case, we have a number of elderly patients. We have a number of visually impaired patients. So, having a situation where folks are parking on the right-of-way is just not an acceptable thing to do on a long-term basis. Moving back to this, I will talk about the fact that of the 261 workdays in 2019, we were overcapacity in our parking lot 135 of those days. That's just a little over 50%. I've broken this parking demand down into three categories, which is to explain why to some folks observing the parking lot, they would say, "Well, the parking lot isn't full," and they're absolutely correct. 95 days, they are not full. That is because, on all of these days, all of the staff for the eye clinic are not permitted to park in the parking lot. They are actually parking on Gray Street and Westland Street. Just quickly, memo showing that that's where they're required to park for this operation. So, moving to the first column, 95 of those 135 days, the parking lot would appear to be half to three-quarters full any time during the day. If staff parking were there, this parking lot would be totally full, these 95 days. The next column, 27 days, staff is still parking on the streets. Parking lot is three-quarters to all the way full every one of these days. 27 days, 10% of the year, which is actually 20% of the 135 days. There are 13 days during 2019 where the parking lot was overflowing. Patients were forced to park in the street as well as all of the staff. We have a very significant need for additional parking for this eye clinic. And it is not a situation that is acceptable. We've had complaints from some of the adjacent businesses about parking in the street, parking in their parking lots. Our applicant and owner is attempting to correct those situations, providing the additional parking that's needed. From this, I just want to move on quickly to compatibility, and I want to run through a number of the places in town where we have this similar-to-exact situation. This is Bay Shore Social Club, the old Stovall House. Highlighted in yellow is the parking that's been expanded into a neighborhood. This is the Bellamy, which is a condo project on Bay Shore with parking expanded into the neighborhood. It may look like it's a nice little pool area. That's actually the third floor. The first two floors of this particular area is a parking structure expanding into the neighborhood. This is Wright's Gourmet, again, with the parking lot expanding into the neighborhood. This is actually the Tampa Municipal Office Building, which is on Columbus Drive, General Lee at Heinz. And their parking is actually all across the street, expanded into the neighborhood. Next one, this is La Tetera Sita, which has over the years numerous times expanded their parking lot into the neighborhood. This is on Armenia Avenue, just south of Columbus Drive. This is St. Joseph Street, office building to the north, parking lot expanded into the neighborhood. Office building to the south, parking lot expanded into the neighborhood. This is on Cass at Gilcrest, parking lot expanded into the neighborhood. Moving on to Kennedy Boulevard, this is Miguel's, parking lot expanded into the neighborhood. Moving over to here, this is the Solomon Law Offices, parking lot expanded into the neighborhood. Ducky's, parking lot expanded into the neighborhood. All three of these expansions are parking lots across an alleyway from the building. Moving on now, let's talk in particular about the neighborhood that we're in. Kennedy Boulevard, Howard Avenue, moving up to Gray Street. First block, Kennedy Boulevard, this is North A, commercial parking lot. The entire northern half of the block currently under construction with a commercial building and substantial parking in the area. This is the Hardeman Landscape Offices, parking expanded into the neighborhood. This is the Williams Funeral Home, parking lot expanded into the neighborhood. Also, to the north, parking lot expanded into the neighborhood. This is the office building directly south of the subject property, parking lot expanded into the neighborhood. Then, we have our site with parking lot expanded into the neighborhood. Important -- Important issue, we have no additional traffic. It's simply a matter of where people are parking. We have no access from the parking lot to Carmen Street. We are consistent with the West Tampa overlay, as well as all code requirements. The parking lot expansion requires no waivers whatsoever. Our only waiver is for the existing driveway that's on Gray Street. That would remain on Gray Street because there's no physical access available to Howard Avenue itself. And with that, I'm very happy to answer any questions you have, especially as they may relate to the parking demand. Thank you.
Any questions at this time? Councilman Seach.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cohen. Thank you very much for explaining the necessities for the additional parking space. And I do enjoy that you had given us examples around the city. I personally would have omitted the Stovall House, but I digress. My concern with these types of parking going into the neighborhoods, encroaching into the neighborhoods, are the hours of operations. What are the hours of operations of this business? Or any business that may come after it as far as medical goes?
Typical medical office building, eight to five, Monday through Friday.
So I I take it that your concern to the neighborhood is not the the light headlights from all the cars parking, not the noise, not the the people being there after, say, six to to seven o'clock at night?
Correct, I do not believe so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cohen, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, anybody else?
Chair?
Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ryan, I'm asking Development Coordination. I wanted to answer Councilman Dingfelder's question, just on staff side of point of view. Just to remind you again, this is an approved PD. So it's the file zero five one thirty may have been for that thirty-nine spaces through that previous approval in two thousand and five. But to answer your question, as it's currently laid out in the proposed site plan to you, that existing area is actually forty-nine spaces right now. So they may have restriped it for this design that they're presenting tonight. The medical office for itself requires forty-two parking spaces per the site plan as well, if that answers your question. And then just one more thing I wanted to add, because the hours were just brought up, is that the PD currently does not have any restrictions on the hours. But you, if you wanted to place that condition, that'd be something that we have to add to the site plan. Otherwise, it wouldn't be able to be enforced.
Councilman Goode.
Is the lot currently that's there now, is it gated or at a certain time? Or is there just an open parking area, you just go and just park?
By my answer, it is not gated. As a matter of fact, with the previous PD, gating was prohibited on this particular property as a result of solid waste operations and them wanting freedom as to when they would collect solid waste. And there is a public alleyway that would separate these two parking lots that cannot be closed, cannot be gated by a private entity.
Thank you. Well, and to anticipate another question, Dr. Weinstock has no intention of leasing the parking lot after hours to any other users whatsoever. That's not his intent. And we would agree to a condition that would stipulate to that. So we have no interest in, he's not trying to, you know, benefit financially from this expansion. He's just trying to serve the needs of the eye clinic.
You reading my mind, Mr. Mechanic tonight?
I'm sorry?
You reading my mind tonight, Mechanic?
Yes, yeah, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mechanic. Mr. Chair, if I may, thank you, Mr. Mechanic. My concern was maybe that that would be leased out in the evening time for surrounding businesses to park their customers there. Thank you, Mr. Mechanic.
Yes, I I actually drafted a condition that I could read into the record if, and that I could hand it to you, Ryan, if if this was acceptable. Applicant shall not lease any parking spaces to persons or companies who are not employees or patients of applicant's office.
Councilman Moran.
Dave, Mr. Mechanic, I'm not an attorney, I don't possess to be one. However, it doesn't say you can't park there. It says that, you know, you can't, he's not going to lease it. How's he going to prevent someone else from using it?
I, we could add language to say shall not lease or permit parking to anyone who is not a, an employee or a patient of the office. I can certainly add that language.
But the problem is, I I don't, I understand the the feeling that he has, he doesn't want to do it. How's he going to prevent anybody else from using it? Because he's not going to have anything to close the gate. He doesn't have a gate, he doesn't have anything like that.
Randy Cohen, if I may, one easy way to deal with that is to have the property signed for tow, which means that anyone that parks there without permission can be towed. And a towing company is unfortunately very active in towing vehicles when it's in a posted lot and they have the permission of the owner to tow.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Couple of questions. Mr. Cohen, the page you had up, and maybe you want to put it up again, the that talked about a full year's worth of demand.
Yes, sir.
Can you put that up?
Get to it right here.
Okay.
Okay.
There it is. And I know Mr. Viera would tell me not to ask a question that I don't know the answer to. But I don't know the answer to this. But how do you, how did you come up with the, with this data? Did you have somebody out there counting cars?
No, sir. Unfortunately, we couldn't not do that because of COVID. We actually started this process in February of twenty twenty. COVID was upon us. There was not a reasonable way of dealing with parking. So what I did do was, starting January first of twenty nineteen for that entire calendar year, plus January and February of twenty twenty, we reviewed patient appointment records and staffing for each working day of the year. From that, we were able to determine what the parking load was for the parking lot on any given day and when we would have our peaks and generally what those percentages would be. Now, are they a hundred percent accurate? Of course not, but they are reasonably close and reasonably appropriate. And one of the reasons I was very interested in this is I had heard some, some things about the parking lot seemingly not to be full very often at all. That caused me pause until I found the directives that, in fact, in talking with staff, that they were being required to park off property for literally almost three days a week, every week of the year. Then it became clear what was going on, that they were exceeding parking, even though in that first column of ninety-five days, the parking lot may not appear to be fully occupied. It was occupied to an extent that had staff parked there, it would be overflowing. Second column, the parking lot was virtually full. And this is not for a full day. This is for the peak parking demand times of the property, which generally are mid to late morning and early afternoon. So this is not something that's a all-day-long affair like it would be with an office building. As a medical building, parking fluctuates during the day. But we went through every appointment and tallied them all up and worked with that data. And then the staffing that was required to be there for those particular days, based upon the number of doctors there and the number of staff there necessary to handle that client, that particular patient load on that day.
So looking at your data in in January of twenty nineteen.
Yes.
You had five days of greater than two hundred percent.
Yep.
So what does, so what does, how does that leave the other fifteen workdays of the of the month?
That's correct.
So so the other fifteen workdays of the month were at what percent?
Typically, they were less than this. Staff was able to many times park in the parking lot and the parking lot was not full.
I mean, I mean, did, do you have columns for that? Do you have data sheets for that or?
I summarize these all here, I have handwritten sheets.
I mean, I mean, what it appears to me, Mr. Cohen, what you've shown us in these three columns are the are the worst-case scenario days, but you didn't show us the other days. And number one, and number two is, maybe this just isn't the right location for such a busy doctor. I can't hear you. I don't know.
I have no response to that, sir. They own the building, the City of Tampa approved the building. It's an eye clinic, it's been an eye clinic for a number of years. They simply are a very successful eye clinic. And they're trying to, through this rezoning, resolve a parking issue that they have.
Okay, but in regard to the other columns, you you don't have that available for us?
No, sir. I I will will directly admit and specify that a hundred and thirty-five days out of the two hundred and sixty-one workdays in twenty nineteen, they were overparked. The remainder of the days, approximately a hundred and thirty or thirty-two days, they did not have a demand for their entire parking lot as it exists today.
Okay, and my last question, Randy, is is there's, there's situations where we have tried to shunt the traffic away from the neighborhood. I'm thinking about coming out of the Home Depot on on the side street there. What is that, Spruce?
Mm-hmm.
Right, where you can only go, you can only go right out toward Del Mayberry. Is that something that that you've looked at, talked to Jonathan about? Any possibility there? Because obviously, what the neighborhood is mainly concerned about is you're doubling the parking, you're doubling the parking lot, okay? You say it has no impact, but you're doubling the parking lot. And and therefore, they're very concerned about the traffic going through through the neighborhood. And there's probably people online that are waiting to talk to us, and I apologize to them. But I've read, I've read, I've read the correspondence that's in the file, so.
And I would, I would love to address that particular point.
Well, my question specifically is, can you shunt the traffic away from the neighborhood?
Do they have me on? Yes, I'm on. Does not increase traffic, nor does it change the dis.
Randy, my question is, can you shunt the traffic away from the neighborhood?
If we're talking about Carmen, we have no traffic on Carmen because we have no access to Carmen. And if you're talking about Gray, yes, we have a driveway as close as we can physically have it located to Howard Avenue. In the previous zoning, Solid Waste did not want the driveways gated, would not allow the alleyway to be gated, and wanted free movement as to turning right or left from the driveway onto Gray Street to service other customers in the area. So we can certainly talk to Jonathan about it, we can certainly talk to Solid Waste, but I'm just providing you with the information that I have at hand.
You know, I I would also point out that of all the comments that we have received, not one person was a resident or a property owner on Gray Street. We, I specifically looked at that, and we did not hear any objections from people on that particular block of Gray Street.
And I would.
Well, I'm looking at Monica, Monica sent us an email, and she said she lives at thirty-four oh one West Gray Street.
Yeah, I think that's a mile away or so from the property. The, this, this address is twenty-one hundred block.
All right, well, I thought you said nobody lived on Gray Street.
No, I said that that block of Gray Street.
All right, anything else? Mr. Manassi, anything?
Chair, if I may, Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination. I just want to clarify, just so I'm correct on my side. Are, is the agent then okay with adding that note? And is that something that we're going to expect between first and second reading? Should this be adopted? I just want to make sure the language is correct and we're in agreeance, so it's on the record and it's clear and concise.
We are more than willing to add that restriction.
Then I would want, just request, I just kind of wrote it down and just went over it with the legal, parking lot will be leased, will not be leased or permit parking other than employees and patients. And then I put slash customers, just because you have that business office professional use. So I just figured it'd be good to have that in there.
Yes, yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. If there's anything else, we'll go to public comment. Do we have anybody here in the public that is wishing to speak on item number twelve? I see none. We have registered speakers online. I see two of them, Mr. Ramirez, and then we have a Sarah Garcia. All right, if you would raise your right hand, Sarah and Carlos to be sworn in.
You swear in front of the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Ramirez, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you, sir, can I share my screen? Can you guys hear me?
We, we hear you, but nothing's come up, come up yet.
All right, one second.
Yes, now we can see you.
Great. Carlos Ramirez, twenty-one oh three West Carmen Street. Today, I'm representing the Northide Park Civic Association. The proposed rezoning will tear down two existing houses, one of them being the former home of Tampa Hillsborough County Court Lord J. T. Tuckley, as we have mentioned, who also sent a letter in opposition. In their place, they're going to build a parking lot. We walk past this lot every day. I live on the twenty-one hundred block of Carmen Street, so I'm always walking my dog here, my kids are always playing around. And this lot is never full. Now, this picture that you see here, there's cars parked on the right of way. The cars on the left belong to that building on the left. And the cars parking on the right, in this particular situation, there was some roadwork going on. But usually, when you see cars like this, they are, there's usually a big event at the JCC. And all the cars from that event usually bleed into our neighborhood and also Armory Gardens. As you can see, there is always plenty of spaces available. Every time I walk through here, there's always plenty of spaces. Now, that, the, the spreadsheet that that the applicant has provided, they said that this was for the early morning peak and also for the early afternoon peak. So that would be a maximum of four hours, probably two to three hours of the time. So half of the time, for two and a half hours, this empty lot is, or this lot, they say, is full. The rest of the time, it's not. This is the zoning map for the area. This area historically has been residential. This was established by, this was part of the Benjamin Lot additions that they have here. And as you can see, there are a lot of PDs that have come through. And they're just eating away chunks of our neighborhood. Mr. Cohen was very good to show that throughout the city, parking lots are taking over our neighborhoods. So that is well established, that that is going on. This is the future land use, we saw this earlier. Just again, want to point out that the rezoning is residential lots. Even for the future use, they're meant to be residential lots, but they're changing them into a parking lot. I had a bunch of slides for waivers, but they have gotten rid of two of them. So I will concentrate on waiver one, which is to permit access to the local street. You will hear the traffic problems that we have here. If you read through the correspondence, you know that there's a speeding problem through this neighborhood. And also in this neighborhood, this intersection right here, there's been twelve accidents in the past five years. So now we have a bigger parking lot with cars coming out. Their choice are either to go into this intersection, which is very dangerous, or filter through the neighborhoods, going north towards Cypress and south to Kennedy. And because they are closing these houses down, the situation that you're seeing on Gray Street where cars are parking on the street will now be possible on Carmen Street, because those driveways and those homes will go away. So we feel that this goes against ALU Policy six one one nine and section twenty-seven one thirty-nine four, because the traffic will be directed into into the neighborhoods, and that's going to substantially interfere with the rights of the property owners. I just want to say real quick, we are against this, but we are not against development. We have talked to many developers coming into the neighborhood to, with great coordination, and we've had some really positive things come of it. We have not been approached by the applicant. The Civic Association has not, neither has the Northide Park Alliance, which is the business group.
Thank you very much.
So with that, we ask that you deny the rezoning request, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sarah Garcia.
Yep. Hi, my name is Sarah Garcia, twenty-one oh one West Carmen Street. I have my son yelling in the background. I can't really follow up from Carlos because he said it all. But we're on a small street, we're on Carmen, there's lots of kids. There's really no need to have a parking lot. I understand where they're coming from, but if you park in the street, it's not bad. I I work downtown and I pay for parking. So be grateful you have a spot to park and there's nothing there. There's, it would be just, there's two houses that just got built across the street from Domain. Domain. Beautiful houses adding to the neighborhood. It would be wonderful to have another house or two built on that property instead of a parking lot. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. I believe we only had the two registered speakers. I already asked if anybody here was speaking on it. Is there any other questions, comments from council members before we get a motion to close? Or any, I'm sorry, rebuttal from the applicant?
David Mechanic again, for the record. I'll be brief. I don't know if Mr. Cohen wanted to respond, but just to the two comments, the gentleman said that the parking lot was never full. What Randy's analysis shows is that the parking lot is over capacity by at least two times, about 50% of the working days of the year. So, while you can sort of say, well, it's half empty or it's half full, but the point is, the overflow is a problem when you have elderly and patients that are, who are visually impaired. So, it's not a good situation, and I think the doctor is trying to do the right thing to avoid or reduce impacts to the neighborhood. Also, there was a comment about waiver one. He was objecting to waiver one. This is an existing driveway that was approved as part of the original project and was built. There's no other means of access to this parking lot other than if you wanted to open it up to Carmen, but that wouldn't solve any problem at all. That would make it worse. So, again, this waiver is just simply to preserve the existing driveway. Randy, do you have anything you want to add?
The only thing I would add is that we have staff parking on Gray and on Westland a substantial amount of the time. On an infrequent basis, we have patrons parking along Gray and along Westland. This parking lot expansion will actually reduce parking on Gray and on Westland, which are perhaps concerning to those folks in that area. We have not seen any parking on Carmen. We are doing absolutely nothing to encourage parking on Carmen. And as a result, I think we've adequately shown and demonstrated the demand for this additional parking and that there are safety issues regarding this parking because of what's currently going on with on-street parking. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all we have. Appreciate your consideration.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Mechanic, I know Mr. Shelby doesn't like to hear me say this, but based upon all the evidence, and we're about to close the hearing, I'm not supportive of the petition. You're basically, you're doubling the potential impact on the existing driveway. And that's, you know, so to say, well, the waiver as it exists today is the same, I think is disingenuous because it's twice as many parking spaces using that. We realize you can't, you have to get out to the side street, but you're doubling the impact. But that's not my question. I just wanted to tell you why I can't support the petition. But my question is this, David, is Mr. Mechanic, if council approves this, I'm not sure it's a good idea to include the additional condition that you just proposed to staff and legal. And the only reason I say that is, if there is additional parking there, this neighborhood has felt the impacts of the JCC, that maybe that would be a good place for the overflow parking of the JCC. Now, I know I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth, but, you know, I just want council to think about that a little bit because we've all heard about complaints of the overflow parking from the JCC. So, before we go through on that condition, and that condition is forever, I want everybody to think about that. But, like I said before, I probably don't have any standing to even mention any of this because I'm not going to support the petition, so...
Understood. I think we are willing to add the condition or not add the condition at the pleasure of council.
Anybody else before we ask for a motion to close?
Who to close?
Second.
Motion to close from Councilman Gude, second from Councilman Viera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Any opposed? Councilmember Viera, would you mind taking this item?
I will, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hereby move in a substantive ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. Ordinance, rezoning property in general vicinity of 501 North Howard Avenue, 2113 West Gray Street, and 2114 and 2118 West Carmen Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification, PD Plan Development, and RS 50 residential single-family to PD Plan Development Medical Office and Business Professional Office, providing an effective date.
Give me a second.
If we can, Mr. Chairman, do you have the additional information that you might want to add?
Yes, sorry, yep.
And also, if you can, Councilman Viera, with regard to the revision sheet that was provided by staff, and also the reference, please, the proposed changes by the petitioner between first and second reading, and if there are any additional conditions, particularly with regard to the parking conditions, if you could reference those, if it's council's pleasure to do so.
Yes. And also, the proposed development is shown in the site plan promotes or encourages development. There's appropriate location, character, and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. Proposed use promotes the efficient and sustainable use of land and infrastructure.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second that with the adding of the condition, yes.
Which condition is that specific?
That they will not be used for any other time except for patients and/or work staff.
All right. We have a motion, Councilman Viera. Sir?
Question on the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Viera, I know...
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Manassi?
I'm sorry. If we're talking over here, we may need the hours operations then if we're going to be restricting the, to be for employees or customers only of the business in the motion.
I believe Mr. Mechanic had stated seven o'clock was the latest?
No.
Monday through Sunday.
Are we going to get more evidence if we need to reopen?
At eight o'clock in the evening, I don't think that has any impact whatsoever.
Wait, let's get a motion to reopen the hearing.
So, move.
A motion from Councilman Citro. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Mechanic. I'm sorry, we had to reopen the hearing.
I'm sorry, David Mechanic, for the record. I mean, we had proposed a condition which said we wouldn't lease or allow parking to anyone outside of employees or patients of the medical practice. But hours of operation, I'm not sure how that works if a doctor is working, you know, filling out records at 8:00 PM. Is that, that would theoretically be a violation of that condition. But, I mean, the normal patient in and out of the office is 5:00 or 5:30, something along those lines. But again, there could be stragglers, that could be six, but we're not talking about any significant usage at that point.
Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination, just to add on it, and we're not trying to be stubborn with it, but it comes to an enforcement issue. If we have to actually enforce this no parking requirement, how do we enforce that without having some type of hours operation?
That's a simple one.
Again, we have stated, he stated that the parking would only be used for clients?
Correct. And, well, patients, clients...
Medical staff and doctors. So, if a doctor is there until eight o'clock, he is still permitted to park there.
Just from our standpoint, we would not know if that's the doctor or not. So, there's no, you know what I mean? There's no way to know when that parking lot is actually not being utilized by being...
Then, Mr. Chair, I will withdraw my motion on the conditions, but I just foresee something happening, what has happened at Villa Brothers Park with the past.
Councilman Miranda.
I'm not trying to get involved in how to identify a car, but that's very easy when you, you can park your, you have staff, you know how many staff you have, you mark them as staff, and you have a little placard on the car with a number, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. And, you know, unless you have a breakdown or something, you're going to drive your car 99.9% of the time. You're going to do that. I do that in my other job. I park at my spot, and that's it. And I got a little placard that they give me.
Well, we would certainly be willing to post the property that no parking other than patients or employees of the eye clinic.
Yeah. And I believe what the traffic consultant said, you may also post, you have a code.
Yeah. I mean, we are trying to be as cooperative as we could be here. I apologize.
And I stand.
Councilman Dingfelder.
So, if Mr. Citro withdrew his second, I'll second the motion, Mr. Viera's motion to, in regard to this petition, without any of these conditions that Mr. Mechanic's referring to. Because again, Mr. Citro, that's exactly the point, is the Villa Brothers, the problem with the Villa Brothers was that was public property. That was park, that was city park. And it was completely wrong of the JCC and the city to allow that overflow parking to go there. But the reality is, is that facility, the Armory is a big facility, for whatever reason, it got approved without enough parking, so now there's overflow parking. So, my point is, if this passes, it might not be a bad idea for that, some of that JCC overflow parking to be able to go 80 or 90 spaces in the evening or on the weekends into there. So, that's why I think a more pure approach, Mr. Viera's motion, and I can't tell you, Mr. Viera, how to make your motion, but I think a more pure approach is just to approve what they've asked for and leave it there because, like I say, that might be a good opportunity to help the neighborhood with some of that overflow parking from the JCC.
One last statement, Mr. Chair, if I may, please.
Yes, sir.
But then, Councilman Dingfelder, then you're putting undue burden upon the neighbors that live next to these parking areas, in my opinion. With their consent, I would say, yes, it's great, but we don't have their consent right now.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Councilman Gude.
You know, again, you go with a double-edged sword, and at the end of the day, both ends of the sword are sticking to community. That's the whole premise of this whole situation that I see. At this point, I don't think I'll be supporting this item because I don't see a win either way you look at it, to be honest, and just the way I see it at this point.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I guess. Did we?
Wait, yes.
We closed the hearing there. Yeah, I was going to say, let's reopen, I would suggest, because we're talking about changes of the motion, and I think it's good to...
We reopen.
But it's, I'm sorry, we open and close, okay?
It's currently open, Mr. Chairman. Is that correct?
I'm past my bedtime.
Okay. And then, if you wish to, if you're done with your discussion, then would be appropriate, if you don't want to take any more testimony, it's appropriate to close the hearing.
May I have a motion to close?
Who to close?
And I was going to say, before, since we had some discussion, I'd like to hear from the petitioner on some of the issues we discussed, if I may.
That would be appropriate before you close the hearing. Thank you.
Mr. Viera, we are, as I said, trying to be as cooperative as we can. I mean, we would agree to the condition, or if it's deemed preferable to not have the condition, we would be okay with that, too.
If I'm feeling counsel out here, I think that without the conditions, it's going to be more favorable. If I'm, that would be amenable to you, I would assume?
Yes, I mean, I suppose, yeah. I'm not sure, but yes, sir.
Well, let's hear from council members. I mean, if I may, in terms of folks' thoughts on this, I mean, before we close, I mean, because we're having a couple of options here, I guess, if you will.
Well, I haven't, I haven't said much. You know, I hate to see the Tokley House demolished, but it went before another board, it went before another group of people, and they did not deem it historical. You know, what am I going to do at this point? He doesn't live in that house. It was previously sold, you know, it's out of our hands. Again, I'm, you know, I hate to see buildings knocked down because that's all we've been doing for the last 50 years. However, you know, looking at this, regarding the parking and putting those stipulations there of not parking after this or that, there was the issue with the JCC that was brought up, and a lot of complaints from the neighborhood because of the overflow and whatnot, and Villa Brothers Park and all these things, because I had to help with that. So, I would suggest that, you know, those stipulations not be put in the parking and just leave it as is, as you originally proposed it, to have that flexibility. Should the property owner wish to lease that parking to the JCC for overflow, they have that option, not just no parking and that's it.
Thank you, certainly.
And not to muddy the waters. Headlights don't create much problem during the day. They only create it at night. I'm not going to put the burden on the petitioner to have to put a wall or whatever around the parking lot. And that's what's happening.
Yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
We have a wall on both the east and west boundary, per the code.
Yeah, I saw a masonry wall on the site plan there, so...
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Motion to close?
Second, or first, I guess.
All right. Motion from Councilman Viera, do you have a second? Second, Councilman Citro, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Councilman Viera, do you want to...
Yes, I'll remake my motion again and wait for a second.
All right. We have a motion from Councilmember Viera. Do we have the second?
And I'll second it, and I'll assume that the motion did not include the...
Based, yes, based upon, based upon the, number one, the applicant, there appears to be no significant policy-based preference. I'll certainly go for it. That's fine.
And Mr. Viera, if I can just state, or if you could just restate again, it includes the revision sheet plus the changes that were presented by the petitioner between first and second.
Yes.
All right. We have motion, Councilman Viera. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Dingfelder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Foes.
Nay.
We have a nay from Miranda.
We have a roll call, please.
Roll call. Let's roll call.
Viera?
Yes.
Gude?
No.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson? Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
No.
The motion carried with Gude and Miranda voting no, and Carlson being absent.
Thank you very much.
Second reading and adoption will be on January 14th at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you. Item number 13.
Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination. Item number 13 is file number REZ 20-21. It's for the property located at 6805 North Navin Avenue. The request before use going from zoning SHRS to SHPD, that's Seminole Heights Plan Development, for a single-family residential semi-detached. I'll defer to the Planning Commission. If you please return to me afterward so I can complete my report.
Mr. Hay, you're muted.
Here we go. Good evening, councilmembers. David Hay, again, with your Planning Commission staff. I have been sworn, the next site is rezoning 20-21. It is located within the central Tampa Planning District, and more specifically, within the Seminole Heights Urban Village and the old Seminole Heights neighborhood. There is transit within the area. Harp Route 1 and the Metro Rapid Route serve the subject site, and it's, the stop is located approximately 320 feet to the west. The closest public recreation facility is American Legion Park, and that's located 0.17 miles to the north of the subject site. And the site is not located within an evacuation zone.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I think we should make sure the petitioner is online and participating before we waste time on it.
Do we have, it's Elise Batzel?
Councilman, their agent is here.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I was looking for Elise, and you weren't her, so, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. Sorry about that.
All right. Next, on to the aerial. This is the subject site. Pocahontas, East Pocahontas Avenue is to the south. You've got North Central Avenue about a block to the east, and then Sly Avenue and the interchange with I-275 is located about two blocks to the north. The surrounding area is primarily single-family detached. There are commercial uses present to the north of the subject site at the intersection of Sly and Central. Here we have the adopted future land use map. Here we have the adopted future land use map. You could see the subject site and the parcels to the, basically, on four sides are all residential ten. To the northeast of the subject site, it goes up to residential twenty, that's in the brown, and then we get to the more intensive community mixed-use thirty-five, represented by the pink, located to the northeast around Central and Sly Avenue intersection. The adopted future land use map, again, is residential ten. It does allow for single-family detached housing. It does allow limited townhomes and other neighborhood-serving uses. The development pattern transitions to that residential twenty to the northeast, which allows consideration for higher density than the residential ten. The site is located within the Seminole Heights Urban Village, which is one of the designated areas of the city, which seeks to, to support a high-quality development pattern. In order to achieve a higher density within desired areas of the Seminole Heights Urban Village, a node bonus is in place, which seeks to focus infill development towards specific nodes and corridors. Neighborhood Policy three point two point one allows a density or intensity bonus for projects located within identified nodes in Seminole Heights. The subject site is within point five miles of an identified community node, and that's at North Nebraska Avenue and East Sly. While the maximum density allowed for the site for the R-ten flu category is three dwelling units, the applicant is requesting one additional unit for a total of four, which is allowable under the density bonus mechanism. Providing a mix of residential choices while respecting the scale of the surrounding community is consistent with the policy direction regarding all urban villages. Further, the comprehensive plan seeks to provide for different intensities of single-family areas to reflect differences in the existing and desired character of these areas. A review of the elevation submitted with the site plan illustrates that the proposed massing and scale of the development complements the existing neighborhood. Proposed PD also utilizes an alley for garage access for two of the units, furthering comprehensive plan policy direction, specifically land use policy four point four point six. The comprehensive plan also encourages new housing on vacant or underutilized land, giving the development potential available to be utilized in this area of the city through the node bonus. The subject site is considered by Planning Commission staff is underutilized under its current use. Overall, the proposed rezoning further several comprehensive plan policies promoting residential infill in appropriate areas, especially within areas in proximity to employment and transit options. Proposed rezoning balances the need to be sensitive to areas planned for single-family detached, while also recognizing the need for additional housing options within designated areas. So based on those considerations, the Planning Commission staff recommends to you this evening that, that the proposed plan development be found consistent with the provisions of the Imagine Twenty Forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you, that concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Mr. Manassi.
Thank you, Chair. Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination, again, item number thirteen's REZ twenty dash twenty-one. I'd just like to point out for the record, starting out, that there is a revised revision sheet that I will be turning in to Mr. Shelby, as well as Mr. Crew over there for the city clerk. The agent, as well as planning staff, do agree upon the changes, and I'll hit on a couple of these changes towards the end of my report to go into detail about the bonus node that David Hay was referencing. So the site's on screen, and the applicant, again, is proposing to rezone the property located at sixty-eight oh five North Navin Avenue from residential single-family SHRS to Seminole Heights Plan Development SHPD, and this is to allow for residential single-family semi-detached units. The property is located the east side of North Navin Avenue between East Hiawatha Street and East Pocahontas Avenue. The lot contains fourteen thousand seven hundred square feet, or point three four acres. The setbacks for the north are seventeen feet, and that's for the primary structure, five feet for the porch, thirteen feet for the attached garage. To the south, seventeen feet for the primary structure, five feet for the porch, thirteen feet for the attached garage, and the east is three feet for the primary structure, fifteen feet for the detached garage, and west, twenty feet for the primary structure, twelve feet for the porch, and sixty feet for the detached garage. The maximum building height is proposed at thirty-five feet for the primary structure, and twenty-two feet six inches for the accessory structure. The applicant proposes front entry to all units on the west North Navin Avenue, with parking access on the northeast Hiawatha Street and the southeast Pocahontas Avenue. All units are two stories in height, with the north and south units containing attached two-car, two-car enclosed garage parking, and the two middle units containing one, one porta-cachet parking and one-car detached garage parking. The total of two parking spaces are required for each dwelling unit, and two parking spaces are being provided for each dwelling unit. The property is surrounded by residential single-family in the SHRS zoning districts to the north, south, east, and west, and the site is located in the Seminole Heights District, and compliance with that development, with that district development standards is required. There were no historic landmark structures within a thousand feet of the subject site, and there are some minor site plan modifications as the revised site plan, I'm sorry, the revised revision sheet that I'll turn in, that the agent and planning staff has agreed to, that was for development coordination, natural resources, stormwater, and, as well as urban design for the Seminole Heights District. To go into the location, and David Hay pretty much pointed out, well, I'll show you the site, actually, that's on screen first, and explain that a little bit, so the porta-cachets for the two interior units that are facing Navin, and then the, the rear garage, so that's meeting the parking requirement for the two internal units, and then these detached garages for the north and the south units. So you have four units, and as David stated, for the policy in the comp plan, it does state that the bonus node can be activated, and that's how they're getting the four units. The determination for those improvements was reviewed by planning staff, and, as well as the zoning administrator, to, for enhancements to the benefit of the public realm. And what I'll show you now is the revised revision sheet, and specifically, this bolt point item, this is the revised, it's, it's a revision that the agent sent to staff, so we can review it with the zoning administrator, to determine whether or not the enhancements would meet the, the definition or the interpretation of that Policy three point two point one. As you could see, they're gonna be adding a south, on the southwest corner, they're gonna show a pad and a public bench on the, I'm sorry, the northwest corner, and add a pad with a public sitting area as a pop-up library. And what I did was, I snipped the two visuals from the, the plan that we reviewed to show counsel tonight. The reason this plan is not what, is not the plan that's before use procedurally, I can't take a revised plan at this stage of a rezoning, and this bonus node language and interpretation took a little bit more time. So that's where the request between first and second reading is, where they're going to actually install these two pads, as described, in this area and this area, to meet that definition of that Policy three point two point one for the bonus nodes, so they can get that fourth unit. And again, that's for the enhance, the enhancements that benefit the public realm. David did show you a vicinity map, and I'll, I'll go into it again, but the subject site is outlined in red. It's kind of like on this own little zoning lot, minus the structure to the back, but all around it is single-family residential, and I could show you some pictures, the subject site, the current, the current single-family home. Most of it was fenced off, it's obviously a larger site. There's the alleyway between, here's the subject site, and then the closest neighbor, and that neighbor would be to the east. And this is the other side of the alley, as you can see, it goes through. The rest of the photos are just the single-family homes, I kind of went in a clockwise, a counterclockwise pattern around the, the block, just to give you an idea, but again, they're all single-family residential detached dwelling units. So with that being said, the development review and compliance staff, we did review the application, and we found the request consistent with the City of Tampa Land Development Code. There are no waivers requested for this petition, and should it be the pleasure of city council to approve this application tonight on first reading, the minor modifications can be done between first and second reading of the revised revision sheet that I will turn in, and staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions at this time? Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you. Ryan, going back to the bonus provision, is there any guidance within, within the language in the, is it in the code or the comp plan? You know, they're, they're going from three units to four units, based upon that bonus clause. I mean, that, you know, that's a, that's a huge benefit to, to a developer, and, and yet, in return, you know, they're, they're talking about two little benches, like, you know, I could go to Home Depot and build for thirty dollars, perhaps, I don't know.
Counsel, if I can, you know what I, I would do? Because this is relevant, I, I would take that site plan revision sheet and make copies for council, because I believe you're asking an excellent question, Councilman Dingfelder. This is, because this is Seminole Heights, and the staff will tell you more about it, it is going to be a finding of council to make that determination, that's part of your decision-making.
Right, but I wanted to know what, what, if any, guidance there was within the, within the Seminole Heights Code or within the comp plan to help us make that decision.
Good question, and I'll get copies of that made for each of you.
Ryan Manassi, and I'll try to answer your question, sir, and just please let me know if it doesn't, and I'll do my best. So what I have on screen right here is that policy, again, here's the revision sheets, there's more than, I didn't print out more than four, but. So this is the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and, and David did go over this Policy three point two point one, but so it's on screen, it's talking about that twenty-five percent increase, and that's how they're getting this, through this node bonus, okay? And highlighted here, as you go down through the pages, it's gonna say, again, the enhanced land and streetscape and bicycle parking paths that enhance the quality of life in the public realm. Okay, so what was presented between the agent and staff previously, there were some landscape improvement amenities, and we didn't find that to be sufficient, so what they did, they proposed another iteration of some type of enhancement to the land and streetscape, and that was through these two pads that they're gonna be installing, one being a pop-up library and one being a public bench. Again, this was reviewed by the zoning administrator, as well as planning staff, to determine that was consistent with the development. This is a single-family neighborhood, you know, a single-family detached neighborhood, so staff felt that that was sufficient to meet the bonus node requirement, given this location.
Okay, so, as an aside, I'll, I'll ask staff and legal to make a note about that policy, and that we should revisit it when we, when we go back into our comp plan revisions, because frankly, I think that's rather inadequate. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Anything else, sir? No, all right. Applicant?
Good evening, for the record, Kevin Reali, four oh one East Jackson Street, for the applicant. I have a number of support letters, and I also have some copies of my presentation, if the council members would like to follow along, but I will be presenting on the Elmo as well. So I'll go through my first few slides pretty quickly here, because staff has covered this in, in significant detail, but the, the property here is a block from some commercial property, two blocks from Sly Avenue in Seminole Heights, between Florida Avenue and two seventy-five. I, I do have one more copy, yes. This is a closer aerial of the, of the property, and as you'll note, this commercial uses here and, and alleyway, and just the general neighborhood, the houses immediately surrounding that staff showed are all a single-story, but the, the general area is a single-story and two-story homes. Thank you. Again, the future land use map, and here, the only thing I'll note, in addition to what was covered by staff, is that the, the application here has a, a double lot, and that doesn't really exist in the area, and that, so with a double lot with one home on it, and the other portion of the lot being vacant, this property is underutilized, as the comprehensive plan would, would consider things, and so that, that's part of the, the reason for the, the goal of the development here. The goal for R-ten is also to be pedestrian-scale development, single-family residential scale, which includes single-family accessory units and duplexes, and, which is what is proposed here, and then the Seminole Heights, Seminole Heights Neighborhood and Community Node is the provision, as stated, and as I'm sure we'll discuss more, which is the goal to develop under. So to discuss that, the community node goal more, the idea here is to offer a bonus, whether it be intensity or density, in these nodes, so that as this area redevelops, it puts intensity or where, intensity, intensity where desired and where, where needed, based on how this was reviewed under the comprehensive plan. The existing zoning in the area, again, is stated by staff, so won't go over this too much, but just to point out that it is near some public transportation options and near some commercial general and residential office uses. So what you have in front of you, councilmembers, you know, of course, this isn't the plan size, but you'll be able to see the amenities included there in this picture, and again, no waivers are requested, are proposed, was proposed as two single-family detached, semi-detached dwellings, with the setbacks as discussed by staff, and no waivers are requested. So I do have our designer here tonight, Mr. Alan Dobbs, and I'm gonna breeze over the design elements pretty quickly, because I think that's very important when we discuss how this is gonna fit into the neighborhood, and I actually think that that's, in a lot of ways, more important than my portion of the presentation, but just to give an idea of the significant effort that was put into designing this, to make sure that it fit in the character of the neighborhood and fit in the goals of the comp plan with this density bonus, which, the density bonus is focused on the amenity, but the goal is also to make sure that the scale fits in with the neighborhood, and the, the massing and bulk and scale does fit in the, the character of the neighborhood, including the significant design that was put into this at this early stage. Discussing the bonus, under the comp plan, it's actually referred to in, in three point two point one with the node bonus as, as an amenity. It was difficult to try and figure out what, what to do, because this is a very small development, two lots together adding one unit. I understand Mr. Dingfelder's point that there is, you know, one unit would be twenty-five percent difference, but it's still a small-scale development. The landowner now is planning to develop and live in it, and lives in the property now, and wants to remain in the, in the neighborhood. And so, given the, the area, some type of amenity that might be available on a much larger project, like perhaps a park or something, just, just didn't really work, but what's notable in the area is, there's no sidewalks anywhere around here, so as redevelopment comes through, the goal will be to, or not the goal, the requirement of the code will be to include those sidewalks, and eventually make this a more walkable community. This being essentially the first step of that in, in this area, the idea was to focus on those sidewalks and add in this bench and the pop-up library, understanding it is, it is modest compared to what might be seen in a larger development, but it is, it is not a very large development, and what we also had is, Mr. Dobbs went into the neighborhood, he's very active there, and has lived there for a number of years, and discussed with some members of neighborhood how they felt about it, and generally was able to have support for that. Discussing the vision statements, and I'll go over these briefly, but the vision statements talk about integrating uses and creating walkability, and this development will do both of those things. That also encourages multi-use options, and this would be a different use and another housing option in the area, which is also encouraged by the, the comprehensive plan. It's gonna protect the existing character, the significant goal to protect the character was put into the design, to make sure that this wouldn't be something that would stick out in the neighborhood, and in fact, I think that what Mr. Dobbs will show, it fits in quite well. And then creative parking, and so the parking is designed into this, and so you don't have, you don't have a lot sort of on one portion of the property, it's integrated throughout. The staff report from the Planning Commission staff listed quite a number of comprehensive plan policies that are encouraged, actually, many more than what I have shown here, because this development is unique, and with that uniqueness, becomes a lot of extra policies that are supportive, but I want to focus on some design policies, in the next slide, some, some planning policies. So, so picking those out, the design goal, like I've been repeating here, is a lot of effort on the design, is to enhance the urban neighborhood character, to make sure that the development is in harmony with new and old structures, to make sure that alleys, which are part of the historic Tampa neighborhoods, are still utilized. The project will do all of those things. Additionally, the, the scale is mitigated through the design, and it's oriented to the sidewalk on Navin Street. Additionally, discussing planning, this is infill development- Additionally, discussing planning, this is infill development using an underutilized yacht, the lot. The bonus use is, is provided for with the amenity, but also with the design. The design is a big part of that, and there's a lot of effort to make sure that it's integrated with the surrounding character of the area. It's generally near the periphery of the neighborhood, but to the extent it's not, it's well-integrated through its design. And it also meets the goals to infill in the nodes and to accommodate housing growth and encourage housing diversity. So in conclusion, I'll just reiterate, as the council knows, staff, planning commission and city staff support this, and now I'll have Mr. Dobbs come up and discuss in more detail the design.
See, okay, here we go. Okay, my name is Alan Dobbs. I live, or yeah, I live at 5502 North Cherokee Avenue, and I have been sworn. I moved, my wife and I moved into the neighborhood in early 1990. I was in the architecture school at USF, which is actually Architecture School of, and Community Design, and I was very interested in Seminole Heights and got very active in, in the neighborhood way back when we were just, it was just becoming a historic district. So obviously, it has become a very desirable place to live, and it's undergone a lot of changes. Seminole Heights, you know, started out as one of Tampa's first suburbs, and then, and then over the years, you know, it's gone through a lot of evolution, becoming a historic district. But one of the things is, you know, there's a lack of diversity in Seminole Heights. There's a lot of diversity with architectural styles and things like that, but there's mostly single-family detached homes and very little multifamily. So with multifamily and more dense projects, what is the kind of appropriate development? Well, we've gone from having nothing to some fairly significant structures, you know, like 80 and 100 units, you know, in our neighborhood. So we drastically changed a lot. So, so I felt, or we felt that this project is a good way to sort of show, providing a little bit more density, but still keep with the scale and proportion, setback orientation, and other things that are typical, you know, in the neighborhood. I wanted to show some different housing types here, something other than just single-family residential. I don't know if the camera can zoom in just a little bit because the pictures are a little small, but, okay. So this is actually a duplex or a paired villa. There's two units there. It's one story, very simple. So there's several of those in the neighborhood in Seminole Heights. Mediterranean style is another very common style. This is actually a courtyard and I think has three, either two or four units in it, but then when we get a little bit denser units, there's several, well, this, this property just sold recently, but there's, there's others that are like around eight units. This is probably a little more than eight units. But then there's, there's also townhouses. This is not obviously in Seminole Heights, but these I show as what we want to avoid. These are basically, you know, townhomes or single-family attached homes. You know, the vehicle's very prominent, which is typical, not desirable. And then also just the form of the building, it's very square and plain, no porch. Porches are very desirable in Seminole Heights. This was a, a townhome that the zoning here was actually residential multifamily. It's in Seminole Heights, and it, you see how the massing is broken down, and it's sort of in the scale and character of the neighborhood, and it was built on a, I think it was an RS60 lot at the time. I mean, not RS60, it's RM, but it, it met all the requirements of the zoning code. With the new code in Seminole Heights, all the SH, Form-Based Code that we have now, single-family attached is another option, which is what this is. This was built probably about four or five years ago, and it's basically two units. It's like a townhome, and then there's a detached garage in the back. Then going up in density, you know, these were some townhomes that were built near Giddens in Florida, more density. These were about four to five units. And then, and then we jump in scale to some of these newer units. This is at Giddens of Florida, you know, has about almost 30 units, and then, and then this is the height apartments at Idlewild in Florida. It's really dense, 81 units, and you can see the scale of it here. This particular project, what, I'm going to go, let's see, just checking on, on the time. Can the camera go to that site plan over there? If I walk over there, can it?
Yes, it can. It's, it's on.
It can. Okay, and I can kind of see it. Okay, I wanted to show this because I think it helps to see the green, so you see it more in a figure-of-ground sort of way, because with the development doing the two sort of paired villas or, or attached units, we maximize green space. And then also, you'll know, large porches, port cachets, those are very desirable elements in the neighborhood. Parking was very tricky to accommodate two spaces per unit, but it worked out pretty well to have these two interior units have parking to port cachets. And rather than having parking at a port cachet here, we have the units in the back, the two-story units. So it's almost, it's attached, but it's like a detached garage. It does have its own separate entry, so that it makes a great home office, which now with COVID and everything, that's very desirable. But also, there was a trend before COVID where people were working at home, and so that worked out well for that. And then also, the interior units also have a, a second-floor smaller unit that's accessible here. We're improving the alley, and we're doing sidewalks all the way around these amenities on the corner. I, I know all the people on the Old Seminole Heights Neighbor Association Board, talked with them and to look at, you know, discuss what kind of amenities would be proper, and, you know, everybody seemed to like the, just doing a bench. We talked about a dock watering station or something like that. It does get a little tricky because you have private development for public use, so we, we were a little concerned about the property owner and liability, but we figured just having a paved area and a bench and maybe something like the pop-up library. There's two within a half a mile of this property, and they're, they're very popular. And, so I'm going to try and wrap it up because I think we're getting short here on time. So basically, my clients wanted to, you know, develop the property into something that they could use, but also they wanted to create a unique hybrid type of housing that could maybe set a precedent on, on a little more dense development, but, but keep the character and scale of the neighborhood, which I believe we've done. And with the way it's done, it's less cost because you have a shared construction wall. You have a lot of flexibility because these are all fee simple, so you could build, say, two of them, and then, which is what they're planning on doing, build the two on the south first while they live in their house, and then tear their house down and build the other two. And it makes it easy for phasing and also because of it being fee simple properties. And then it accommodates modern lifestyles, like I had mentioned, with the, the sort of home office. The, with the design solution, we really, can I have just like one minute? Okay, I'll make this quick on just the last couple lines here. So we really wanted to downplay vehicular, the cars, de-emphasize them, maximize size of porches and green space, and we, we meet the requirements of all of the Seminole Heights Form-Based Zoning Code. We're not requesting any waivers. And then, like I said before, the public amenity, we got a lot of input from the Neighborhood Association, and they are all very happy to have that kind of amenity. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I make one comment?
Of course.
Mr. Dobbs, I want to apologize. The, the, the project looks really nice and sensitive to the, to the community, and I kind of poo-pooed the bench, more out of frustration with our code that doesn't really require you or anybody else to make significant contributions. So out of that frustration came my comment, and I apologize.
Well, it was for the good of the neighborhood and the community, so I understand.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right. Is there anybody in the public?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
David with the planning commission. I just, since there was a discussion about the comp plan policies, I just wanted to provide some context. If I may, the, when we look at neighborhood policy 3.2.1, that's the enabling language that basically allows this consideration for the node. This came out of, and the applicant did mention this, it did come out of the 2009 city visioning study for Seminole Heights. If we look at the overall objective, three, neighborhood objective 3.2, which is also contained in the planning commission report, it does direct that land development regulations be developed to deal with these infill and the amenities that they're to provide. I'm not sure that was accomplished, and that is what's leading to the vagueness about the amenities. Now, I will say, usually, the comp plan is not where the details really should be focused on. That's more appropriate in the land development code. So I just wanted to address Councilman Dingfelder's concerns earlier about the comp plan policies relating to the land development code and the amenities. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I add just one short point to that?
Sure.
Very specific to that. So it's my understanding, this is the first time this is, this node bonus has ever been used for residential. And so when it's been used for commercial intensity bonuses, what's typically happened is it's been a pay-to-play situation. I, I have, I don't want to speak too much to the commercial parts because I haven't reviewed that any more detail than what I've just stated, but, you know, to, to the extent that this, this is novel, you know, this is, you know, staff and the applicant trying to work together and figure out how to, how to make that work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item, item number 13? Hearing or seeing none. I know we have three registered speakers online, if they're online. If you could turn on your cameras and unmute yourselves, and we will swear you in, and then we'll get to the public comment. All right, I see. Brittany, do we have Tyler McMahon and Ally?
They're currently not logged on.
Okay, so Brittany, if you could please raise your right hand, and we'll swear you in, and you have three minutes to speak.
Do you swear or pray? You'll tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Um, hi. I don't think I'll take up three minutes. I live right across the street. One of the pictures that the last gentleman showed was looking right at their driveway, which is what we see from our driveway, so it'll be right across the street from us. My husband, two children. We live here, we've lived here for five and a half years. And we support what Laura is wanting to do. We think that the addition of the townhomes will be a great opportunity for more families, young people to come to the area. We like that the design idea fits the theme of the neighborhood. And yeah, we support it, and being so close to it, we are fine with it.
All right, and your name, just for the record?
Brittany Justo, and we live 6806 North Central Avenue.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else for public comment, or that was it?
That concludes the registered speakers.
All right. If there is no other public comment, petitioner, if you have any rebuttal at this time?
I don't know that we would rebut support, but just to point out, I think I bated the lead a little bit. Mr. Dingfelder got me a little focused on the node bonus, but the applicant is here, and it's, it's really important to note that the applicant, the applicant's going to live here, potentially her father's going to live in one of the units, and these are going to be fee units. This isn't going to be a develop, or develop, and leave situation, and I think that that's important to note. Thank you.
Sorry, I would just like to follow up just with one thing. Knowing a lot of residents in Seminole Heights, if anybody had issues with this, they would definitely be here, and I think this council knows from previous projects, if the neighborhood doesn't like something or doesn't agree with something, they would be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from council before I ask for a motion to close?
Motion closed.
Motion closed from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Councilmember Goode, would you mind taking item number 13?
Ladies and gentlemen, REZ-20-21, substance order being presented for first reading consideration. The ordinance is zoning property in the general vicinity of 6805 North Navin Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one with zoning district classification SHRS Seminole Heights Residential Single Family to SHPD Seminole Heights Plan Development Residential Single Family Semi-Detached, Semi-Detached, providing effective date.
Second.
Mr. Shelby?
And, and Councilman Goode, if you could just add the additional language for item number 13?
The revision sheet, you're talking to this person Shelby?
Well, is there a revision sheet related to this? It's, it's, yes, it's the revised revision sheet.
The revised revision sheet that was passed, yes.
Revised revision sheet.
Okay, and also, could you make a specific finding as to any policy 3.2.1 as to the amenities and the bonus? Is it, what is council's intention with regard to that? To accept that revision sheet as the amenity under that section and to permit the bonus under the comp plan designation?
That would be correct, Mr. Shelby, for subdivision sheet with the bonus.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It was unanimous.
The motion carried with Coyleson being absent. Second reading and adoption will be on January 14th at 9:30 a.m. I apologize, I did not hear the vote.
No, it's okay.
We all need some caffeine, Mr. Jim.
That's right. All right, we go up to number 14, and I'm just going to hand the gavel to Councilman Citro. I'm going to step out a minute.
Thank you very much. Do we have a petitioner here?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Councilman, Susan John-Cavalez, Senior Assistant City Attorney. Councilmembers, this matter is before you this evening pursuant to Land Development Code Section 27-318, which authorizes council to consider the suspension or revocation of alcoholic beverage sales for cause. A while back, I delivered to, to each of you a notebook that provides some evidence for this hearing, which, if you'd like to follow along, a copy of the code section that I just referenced. 27-318 is at tab 21 of those binders. So specifically, section 27-318C1, which starts near the bottom of page three of six, again at tab 21, authorizes city council, after conducting a public hearing, to suspend or revoke the ability to sell alcoholic beverages from property which has previously been granted in approval. In order for city council to suspend or revoke, it must determine that the property owner, holder of the alcoholic beverage license, operator of the establishment, or any agent or employee thereof have been found to have violated or been convicted of any one or more of the following. And then that section lists a laundry list of A through N of various reasons why you could consider suspension or revocation for cause. But specifically with regard to this notice of suspension or revocation this evening, there are several that, that are particularly relevant. So one is section D or paragraph D, which allows you to suspend for cause upon finding that there's been operation of the establishment in a manner that repeatedly or on an ongoing basis has negative secondary effects on surrounding property after having received reasonable notice to terminate or correct that condition. Number E, failing to comply with any of the provisions of the fire prevention ordinance, again, after having received reasonable notice to eliminate or correct any condition existing on the property. F, failing to comply with any of the F, failing to comply with any of the provisions of the health and sanitation ordinances of the city, the county, or laws of the state after receiving reasonable notice to eliminate or correct the condition. And then, N, violated any section of Chapter 14 or Chapter 27, any condition, limitation, or restriction imposed by city council or the zoning administrator at the time of approval, or any other city code section relating to alcoholic beverages. The circumstances giving rise to these proceedings occurred largely in May of 2020, and they're detailed in the Notice of Intent to Revoke or Suspend the Sale of Alcoholic Beverages pursuant to Section 27-318 that's dated May 28, 2020, and can be found at Tab 1 of your binders. So during this time period, numerous governor's executive orders, which can be found at Tab 19, were also in effect. We had Executive Order Number 20-51, which was issued on March 1, 2020, which directed the Florida Department of Health to issue a public health emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Executive Order Number 20-52, issued on March 9, 2020, declared a state of emergency for the entire state of Florida in connection with COVID-19. Executive Order Number 20-68, issued on March 17, 2020, ordered all bars, pubs, and nightclubs authorized to sell alcoholic beverages for consumption on premises that derive more than 50% of their gross revenue from the sale of alcoholic beverages, to suspend all sales of alcoholic beverages for 30 days. The governor also issued Executive Order Number 20-91 on April 1, 2020, which directed all persons in Florida to limit their movements and personal interactions outside of their home to only those necessary to obtain or provide essential services or conduct essential activities. So as you may recall, as we approached the end of April and in preparation for reopening the state, the governor issued Executive Order Number 20-12, allowing a partial reopening, the Phase 1 reopening it was commonly known as, and that order was effective on May 4, 2020. So Phase 1 allowed the reopening of restaurants and food establishments licensed under Chapters 500 and 509 of the Florida statutes for on-premises consumption of food and beverage so long as they adopt appropriate social distancing measures and limit their indoor occupancy to no more than 25% of their building occupancy. And appropriate social distancing was defined in that order to require maintaining a minimum of six feet between parties, only seating parties of 10 or fewer people, and keeping bar counters closed to seating. Executive Order Number 20-123, issued on May 18, 2020, increased the capacity of restaurants to 50% if the same social distancing conditions that I just described were met. Previously, on May 8, 2020, the governor had issued Executive Order Number 20-14, which had extended the state of emergency for another 60 days. And pursuant to state statutes, these executive orders, because they were declared during a state of emergency, had the force and effect of law. So again, just to summarize those, all those executive orders, from May 4 to May 18, restaurants could be open at 25% of occupancy with a minimum of six feet between parties, 10 or fewer people, and bar counters were closed to seating. After May 18, those restaurants could be open at 50% capacity, again, with the same social distancing. But during this time period, bars and pubs and those types of establishments were to suspend the sales of alcoholic beverages. In addition to the state emergency order, the city was also under a declaration of local emergency pursuant to the mayor's Executive Order 20-01, originally issued on March 12, 2020, but which has been amended, restated, and extended each week, most recently this past Monday, December 7 of 2020. So I'd like now to ask LaShawn Doc with Development and Growth Management to come forward with a synopsis of the existing approvals on the property.
Um, yes. Good evening, council. LaShawn Doc, Development Coordination. And I'd like to review with you the alcoholic beverage sales approval for this location. So this request, the AB sales was approved back in April of 2014. The request was actually approved under Record Number AB114-67. This is for alcoholic beverage sales for a bar, beer, wine, liquor, for consumption on premise only. This building contains two levels. So the first level was included in the alcoholic beverage sales area. That first level is the interior space, and the rooftop level is that second level. It is an exterior space. So the approved sales area consists of a total of 3,491 square feet, and that's inside space only. No outdoor space was permitted. The Sidewalk Cafe approval was granted for this location. Sidewalk Cafe approval is a separate application, and it is an annual permit that is issued. The approval contained one condition, and I will read to you that condition, which was stated on the approved site plan also. The use shall operate as an establishment whose business is in the preparation, serving, and selling of food to the customer for immediate consumption on or in the vicinity of the premises or for takeout by customers. Food shall be continuously ready to be prepared, served, and sold during all business operational hours. Establishments shall be appropriately licensed as a restaurant or similar food service type use by the state of Florida. Reporting requirements set forth in Section 27-319 shall not apply. So also, I'd like to mention, council, for this location, there are two pending applications for the site. So the first is a 180-day voluntary extension. And the second application that is in process is for a new Special Use 1 alcoholic beverage sales application. Those two applications are still in process currently. And to orient, to orient you on the site, I'd just like to show an aerial of the site. So... So this is the site located on Franklin Street, identified in red. This is Tampa Street on the west. This is Fortune Street to the north, and Royal Street. This is Florida Avenue to the east, and this is the site identified in red, 1202 Franklin. This is a view, just showing the south end of the structure. This is the front of the building, and this is a view from the other side. The second level, which is the outdoor area, which is not covered for alcoholic beverage sales, that is the area that is here. And then this is the first level of the structure. And that concludes the presentation on the current cells. Yes, council, I'd also like to mention, I'm sorry, that the letter, based upon information received to our office from surrounding neighbors, and letter was issued to the business operator. We issued a letter, it went out to the business, it went out to the business owner, and it went out to the property owner. We also had this notice letter issued by hand by TPD. This was a notice of intent to revoke or suspend the sale of alcoholic beverages pursuant to Section 27-318, City of Tampa Land Development Code. This was issued on May 28, 2020, and that letter went out to all of those mentioned. It went into the permit history of the site and the requirements for compliance for the site, and that was submitted and delivered to the locations as indicated.
Just, just to add to that, and I did want to, because I neglected to mention, but the Notice of Intent is at Tab 1. You can see on the letter, if you're, if you're reading along, the business is actually called Mole Iabuela. The business owner and the alcoholic beverage license holder is an LLC called Maya Tampa LLC. And the property owner, at the time that the notice was issued, was a LLC called Paranose LLC. But I believe as of June or July of this year, the property was sold to an entity called 1201 Franklin Holdings LLC. So there is a different property owner, but the business owner and AB license holder, Maya Tampa, is still, still the business owner of this establishment. So behind Tab 10 in your binders, there is a chronology of events and violations. They're outlined in Page, Page 4 of the Notice of Intent, and they go on for two or three pages beyond that. And then at Tab 10, there's included a summary of a compilation of all the numerous calls that TPD received during the month of May for this establishment, as well as all the police reports that are reflected, that were prepared by the officers that responded. And so, all of those show, we believe, and I do have a couple of TPD officers here who will be providing some testimony in a few moments. But as I stated earlier, the Phase 1 reopening started on May 4, and right out of the box, on May 5 and 6, there was unreasonably loud and excessive noise. By May 8 and 9, there were lines out of the door of the establishment. There was no social distancing in violation of the executive orders. Tables had been removed from within the establishment, so apparently they weren't serving food. There was no service, food service that was going on, again, in violation of the city's condition of approval and also the executive orders. Middle of May, May 14 through 15, they were over the 25% capacity that was required to be followed. They were not following social distancing requirements. There was unreasonably excessive noise in violation of Land Development Code, Section 14-54. Again, May 15 through 16, TPD advised the security manager of the numerous violations. The establishment had been converted into a club and was over 100% capacity. And the officer noted that the security manager seemed to have an excuse for every violation. Again, on May 16 and 17 of 2020, the officer noted that the establishment has completely violated all of the state and local executive orders. The bar was open at full capacity. Drinks were being actively served at the bar in violation of Executive Order 20-112. There was no maintaining of social distancing. TPD noted that the owner was uncooperative and did not appear to care about following the guidelines at all. May 19 through 20 of 2020, over 100% capacity in violation of occupancy limits and in violation of the special use approval and the city fire marshal's occupancy limits. There was no maintaining of social distancing, and again, unreasonably loud and excessive noise. May 22 through 23 of 2020, there was blatant social distancing violations that were noted severely over the 50% capacity requirements in violation of Executive Order 20-123. On May 24, Tampa Fire Rescue investigators were on-site and observed that patrons were not following any social distancing guidelines. Most of the patrons were standing and not eating any food. At approximately 10 o'clock, about 20 patrons were noted drinking alcoholic beverages on the rooftop in violation of the city's approval. Also on that date, there was a north side gate exit to the stairwell that, leading up to the rooftop, was padlocked closed with occupants upstairs, and this was noted as a life safety code violation. On May 26 of 2020, again, the establishment had exceeded the maximum occupancy. They were over the 50% capacity requirements in violation of the executive order. There was no maintaining of social distancing. Tampa Police Department was denied entry into the establishment in violation of state statute. Customers were standing at and were being served alcoholic beverages from the inside and outside bars. And then finally, on May 28 or 29, management advised TPD that they were only going to comply with the original occupancy permit, not the COVID guidelines. At 11:10 p.m. that evening, officers observed the atmosphere had again turned from a restaurant to a bar, and patrons were drinking alcoholic beverages around the bar and throughout the restaurant. And so, this, all these reports, and the officers who will testify in just a moment, you know, established just numerous violations. No attempt by the operator, the property owner, or any agent or employee to comply with these regulations. And so, at this time, I'd like to call Lieutenant Travis Moss with the Tampa Police Department to come forward. The first few pages behind Tab 10 are Lieutenant Moss's compilation of TPD reports during the month of May, and so he's going to describe those just briefly.
Good evening, council. My name is Travis Moss. I'm a lieutenant with the Tampa Police Department. Try to be as brief as possible. Before we begin, I would like to say that I was never at Mole Iabuela, so I can't answer anything on these nights. But what I was ordered to do was to compile the information. So what you see on this report that starts May 22, 23, and goes backwards chronologically to May 5, is all pulled off of our computer-aided dispatch system, which is through the Versadex computer system. So, all I did was basically review the address 1202 North Franklin Street, and then I documented each one of these calls. So if you look, for instance, an easy one is May 21, 22, where it says TPD number 20-256008. That is the, the assigned number, or event number, to that call. So if somebody calls in, when they called in this, this complaint, that's the number that was automatically assigned to it. It was catalogued by the, the call taker as a disturbance music, and then meaning, when the, when the call taker heard the complainant, they knew, hey, they're complaining about the noise. It was on May 21, and then 22, 10 hours, obviously military time. That was at 10:10 p.m. It was loud music and talking. What you see that is written in capital letters is the actual CAD call note itself. So that's the call taker taking the call from the complainant. They ship it to the dispatcher, and that was actually what was received by the officers that went out to this, this particular call. So loud music and talking from this location. That's basically what the officers knew. And of course, by this point, we had already known that this place was a problem because we'd been out there several times. And I only did this from the 23rd back to the 5th. Looking, looking at the... Looking at my computer while we're waiting for this, I realized there's actually 14 more calls between the 23rd to the 31st. And then there was actually 18 self-initiated events, which is basically an officer putting themselves out there to go and review. So what they were doing is, and I think Officer Mathis is going to testify to that shortly, is they were going out there almost hourly every night to check the, because we had so many complaints. So, if there's any questions from council?
Do we have any questions at this time? No, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Councilman Gudes.
Officer Moss, Lieutenant, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Any arrests in this case, in any cases at the...
No, sir, I don't believe there's any arrests. From what I've seen, there were seven reports and 10 street checks that were written, but I don't believe there's any arrests.
I saw the street checks. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. And now, I'd like to ask Officer Lee Matheson to testify about his encounters with the Mole Iabuela establishment.
Good evening, council. Officer Lee Matheson of the Tampa Police Department. I'm assigned as the crime prevention officer in the area, so a lot of the problems usually get assigned to me so I can heal, deal with them with the, kind of a personal touch. I was assigned this business by my lieutenant at the time, Lieutenant Ron Polk. And what we're beginning to notice is that there were a lot of noise complaints. We're getting disturbances in terms of people actually fighting in the area. And specifically, we're also getting COVID complaints as well. People were complaining about social distancing. They were over capacity. Just violating pretty much any restriction that was put in place at this time. I started responding to this business on an hourly basis, I believe on the shift of the 23rd. And initially, we were greeted with somewhat cooperation. The business owners and managers nodded their head and agreed, yes, we will follow what you need to, with a smile on their face. But shortly thereafter, it fell off. They continued to say, yes, we will follow the restrictions. We will follow the restrictions, shift after shift and after shift. And there continued to be violations upon violations upon violations each and every shift. Specifically, what I noticed going through, reading back to the COVID guidelines, they were not supposed to be operating as a nightclub because nightclubs at this point were not open for business, period. They were not supposed to be operating as that at all. And as they were open as a restaurant early in the evening, they did convert into a typical nightclub around 9 p.m. nightclub around 9:00 PM. They would shut off or they would have everyone leave the resident, or leave the business, I'm sorry. And they would take out all the tables, all the chairs, set up a DJ, have, according even to them, a dance floor, and they would serve people alcohol directly from the bar, which, again, was a specific COVID violation. They were not supposed to be doing that, period. In addition to that, I was getting numerous noise complaints from nearby residents, and issued them two specific warnings, documented warnings and street checks due to their noise complaints that were, again, in violation of the city ordinance. Going forward, I was also the officer who issued them their cease and desist order, I believe it was called, on the 29th at approximately 18:40 hours, which is 6:40 PM. I met with two managers at that time who, I provided a copy to of them to that order, and they also signed our copy, initially that they understood what was going on. I answered as many questions as I possibly could for them to the best of my ability. When I responded back later that evening, I spoke with the self-described owner of the property, Franco Pascante, I believe, and he advised that he had been on the phone with his lawyer for approximately the last three hours, and his lawyer had indicated to him that they were not going to follow the cease and desist order in terms of the consumption of alcohol on the rooftop. They were going to cease the sale of alcohol on the rooftop, but they were going to, in essence, sell alcohol on the lower story, and then the customer themselves would bring it up to the top for consumption. When I did my hourly walkthroughs, this is what I noted as well. They appeared to have removed from upstairs bar area all their alcohol bottles. I did not see a bartender up top, but there were numerous people each time still drinking upstairs despite being advised that their business was not supposed to be doing this. Even continuing to this point, we were still getting, we will follow this, we will adhere to your guidelines, but immediately when we would come back for the same violations, shift after shift. There was no indication that they were actually going to follow us, follow the guidelines, and it seemed like they were just placating us. I'd be fine to answer any questions that the counsel might have as I was officer primarily assigned to this area.
Any questions for the gentleman?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Officer Matheson. Where is your zone? Where, how far, you know, where do you cover?
So for District 3, I cover all of Sector F as a crime prevention officer. So I'll respond to Ebor, downtown, you know, as far east as pretty much the jail, whatever problems that may occur.
Okay. And during this COVID period, have there been other establishments that you've had to give warnings to or, you know, that sort of thing?
Yes, sir. I've had to give warnings to several other businesses as well.
Okay. And what sort of response in those other establishments, you know, did you get?
Primarily, the issue at this time was Mole Abuela. But when the nightclubs had started opening and Ebor began to reopen itself, it was capacity restrictions with the nightclubs.
And when you gave those warnings, did they, the other establishments, did they respond positively and correct the concerns that you had?
Some of them did, and some of them still continue to violate.
I couldn't hear the end.
Sorry. Some of them responded and made the correct changes to follow the guidelines and the ordinance and the orders, and some of them did not.
Okay. And in your opinion, as related to the total of the, all the institutions that you investigated and spoke to, et cetera, where does Mole Abuela fit, you know, in the worst, the middle, the, you know, whatever?
They were by far the most egregious violator, far and away, not even remotely close.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Nope. All right, thank you very much.
Finally, I'd like to ask Tampa Fire Rescue Investigator Frank Rosetti to come forward and testify about his experience with Mole Restaurant.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Frank Rosetti. I work for Tampa Fire Rescue as an investigator, fire investigator, and I want to make two occurrences, one referencing May 24th. I was tasked or assigned to assist my TPD brothers in entering Abuelas for the purpose of the violations of possible fire code violations that might have been going on there because of occupant overloading, also during the pandemic restrictions. And specifically, the 24th for me was noted because that's the day, as was read here already, that they were having some patrons on the rooftop, which requires you to go up stairwells. One is an interior stairwell of the building and one is the north stairwell that is also an exit discharge. That's the north side exit gate that I observed being locked with a padlock, which is obviously a fire safety or a life safety issue. A business has to be, all their exits have to be readily open and available for people to leave, if, in a case of an emergency. When I questioned one of the managers, who I believe is like the manager, the doorman manager, he said, oh, yeah, we have the key. So I asked him to produce the key. It took him about five minutes to go find the key. I did not necessarily find them. The business at that time, I just educated them on, hey, if you're going to have the stairs upstairs open, or if your business is going to be open at all, you need to have all your exits open and unlocked and easily accessible for the patrons that may be impaired to exit safely. Again, as everybody else mentioned, yes, sir, we'll do what we need to. I understand it won't be an issue again. So at that time, I just documented it, and we were informed at approximately 22, 30 hours, so 10, 30 hours civilian time. They stated, we, business wasn't that busy, so we're just going to shut down for the evening, prompting us to probably leave and not do the hourly checks as we've been instructed to do so. When that occurred, I observed about 15 or 20 people standing in front of the door waiting to enter the occupancy load. I will also state that on that particular day, the business was not overcrowded to their maximum capacity of 100% is 196 allowable total, I believe in the notes. They're allowed to have 60 occupants in the upstairs portion and 136 in the downstairs portion under normal conditions. When we were operating under the COVID conditions, this was the time where the 50% rule was in effect. But we weren't, we didn't violate them at that time because they were under their 50% that day. So on May 27th, again, I was tasked and assigned to assist TPD with their hourly walkthroughs. The first few hours of the day, we started about 9 o'clock or so, 9:30, low crowd, everybody cooperative, no issues noted from a fire safety point of view. Later in the evening, the crowd started getting larger. We approached at approximately 2,300 hours, so 11 o'clock in the evening. We approached the doorman. There was a large crowd gathering in the front door. They weren't occupying, applying the social distance guidelines, the six-foot rule. I asked the doorman, could he give me a count of how many people were in the nightclub at this particular time? And he indicated that there were 96 people. Obviously, that wasn't the case, so at that time, I called my fire marshal and told him that they were exceeding their 169 or 196 occupancy, which is their 100% occupancy under a normal, no COVID restriction. And we, what we call, we didn't shut them down, but we called dump the building. So I evacuated the entire building and started a head count. Officers went in with their body-worn cameras. They observed about 286 people total in the building. As we started to physically, now, mind you, at this point, when I announced the shutdown, several people had left the rooftop, went out the side stairwell, so we didn't count those. But the physical people we actually counted coming out of the building was about 205 patrons, which included 30 staff members approximately. This total came out to 255. Their allowable limit is 196. At that point, I told the management that we were going to let them continue to stay open, but I was only going to allow them to have 100 people in the business. So basically, do simple math, you're allowed 196, rounded up to 200, divided in half, that's the 50% Corona requirement. I counted 100, I had a briefing with the staff and informed them that if this obviously continued, that the fire marshal's office could pull their occupancy load sign and shut their business down until they started complying. Everybody understood, everybody was pleasant, we let 100 people back in, and that actually concluded my involvement with that situation.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel members, I do want to call your attention to, to tab 14 in your notebooks. I just want to put a few photos on the Elmo. I think we, the person who took these photos is waiting to speak to you. He's one of the surrounding neighbors, but put this up on the Elmo and just show you kind of a representative picture of what the crowds looked like. So that's the front of Mole Abuela, and you can see that quite a number of people there, no social distancing. And that's the picture, this is a picture of the rooftop area of the restaurant.
Ms. Fales?
Yes, sir.
When the fire investigator talks about the number of occupancy, is that include of the rooftop or is that just the inside of the facility that's packed?
I believe he was speaking of both the rooftop and the inside, but he can answer that.
Yes, sir. The question was, what the occupancy load being 196 persons allowed in the establishment, that is the total amount. The downstairs is allowed to have 136, the interior portion of the business. The rooftop, the space on the rooftop is allowed to have the other 60 personnel. So total in the square footage or the footprint of that building would be 196 total personnel.
Thank you. So I was looking at the videos.
So it's, their occupancy sign has a split code, like, you know, like you go outside, like, right there, the door, you see the occupancy maximum load, and if you divide that out, so in that business, you have a downstairs that says 60 and the upstairs says, or excuse me, upstairs 60, downstairs 136.
Thank you, sir.
So counsel per Section 27-318, again, counsel may suspend the ability to sell alcoholic beverages for up to 30 days for a first violation. So this would be a first violation, that's the maximum amount of time of the suspension. And in determining whether to suspend or revoke an approval to sell alcoholic beverages, city council shall consider the gravity of the violation, any actions taken by the violator to correct the violation, as well as any previous violations committed by the violator. So based on the evidence in your, in the notebook and that, in the record and the evidence and testimony presented this evening, and considering the gravity of the violations, including the significant number of violations, as well as the, you know, the impacts of public health and safety as a result of the violation, or many violations of the COVID restrictions, as well as the fact that the violator took no actions to correct the numerous violations, but instead blatantly flouted the COVID guidelines as well as life safety regulations, we would recommend that counsel impose the maximum penalty under the code and suspend the ability to sell alcoholic beverages at this establishment for 30 days. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilman Dingfelder.
So procedurally, I mean, you, Ms. Johnson, you've been putting on evidence and that sort of thing, and is the representative from the...
I believe that, yes, their attorney is here.
So procedurally, is he participating? Is this a hearing, cross-examination?
It is a hearing, certainly. He's, yes, entitled to participate in the hearing, yes.
Okay. So is that what we're, that's what we're going to start now?
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
There is pending permits, special use permits. Any decisions we make tonight will have any bearings on those pending permits?
This proceeding is independent of the new special use permit, that application that is currently under consideration by the Development and Growth Management Department.
And if we, if, if this council decides to suspend their license and within three or four days they get another special use permit, that would be allowed?
That could, that could very well, that could very well happen. It would be up to counsel to determine, you know, the length and when that starts. But it would, I mean, this has to be considered separate and apart from the new special use permit application.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Good.
So what you're saying is if this council imposes these sanctions tonight and they're going through a special use permit, they could be granted a permit with the 30 things we're giving them now, is what you're saying?
Counsel has the discretion. I mean, you could, you could direct, you could direct staff and you could craft any type of suspension period to address that situation.
Well, I guess we should focus on this issue first.
I get that, but I mean, that's why I'm asking, because to me, that just doesn't make any sense. If I'm going to impose a sanction on somebody, but yet we're going to give them another permit for a special use, I mean, what?
Again, that's, that's...
I see Mr. Shelby coming to the podium.
All right. Then the attorney for, for the establishment, if you'd like to come up and speak. You can show them the overhead. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So the attorney for the establishment, you'll be speaking solely for the establishment? The owner or no one represents will be here, just only you, sir?
As far as I'm concerned, first of all, my name is Eric Koenig. I represent Maya Tampa in this matter, so that is the business and license holder.
Business and license holder, okay.
Yes. So I'd like to go ahead and address some of the issues. So what I'd like to do is first talk about what, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Look, it's some people leaning forward a little bit. Is number one, why was there alcohol served on the rooftop when there was no permitting? Number two, to discuss the misconduct that the council just heard about. Number three, what has been done to address the issues? And then lastly, moving forward, what the future plans are. So let's start first with what jumps out as arguably the most egregious issue, and that's why is Mole Abuela selling alcohol on the rooftop that is not permitted to sell alcohol on the rooftop? And it's simple. Flybar never had the licensing to serve alcohol on the rooftop. Mole Abuela merely purchased, Maya Tampa merely purchased what Flybar had. And what was conveyed, at least as part of the negotiations, was that there was licensing up there. And I'm not going to embarrass anyone here in any department or otherwise of who has drank on the Flybar rooftop or otherwise, but there have been people from the licensing, permitting, zoning, on down the road. So there was a, just someone missed it, and it filtered the way down. And I've handed out a copy of the application. What I've shown you here is page one, just to get an idea as to what the application looks like. And what I'll do is, I'll draw your attention to, jump to page five, and it's the bottom right, I marked it as Mole Iabuela five, in fairly large font, just to make it easier And as part of the application, you'll see that the applicant is asked to draw a picture or provide a diagram of all areas that are gonna be covered by the, by the wet zoning. And what this is, this is the application to the state that was handed to my clients as part of the sale. Look, this is, this is what we have, and this was the application that went to the state to show what zoning we had. And you can see on page five, it asks, draw all areas where you're requesting your alcohol, basically the sign off from the state. And page seven is fairly clear that it shows the rooftop, and even uses the word bar to describe it. So as part of the application packet presi, that was proposed to the state, part of that application included wet zoning on the rooftop, or at least believed to be on the rooftop. And if you turn to the next page, you'll see the sign off by Hillsborough County, or I'm sorry, the city of Tampa. So it was the local entity had to sign off on this application to show that the application was properly submitted, there was compliance with all zoning at that time, and it includes an even a check mark saying that, that the wet zoning is above and beyond the confines of the building. And this being signed off, this didn't create some sort of right to sell alcohol on the rooftop, I'm not trying to argue that. And I would also like to clarify, the, the testimony earlier by the, by the officer, that Mr. Pescante was on the phone with his attorney, who said, by God, you can keep drinking alcohol on, on the rooftop, that wasn't made. So whatever advice received, I, I, I don't know if advice had been received that this document created a right to sell or drink alcohol on the rooftop. I'm merely showing it to you that this was why Flybar and Mole Iabuela believed it could sell alcohol on the rooftop. So again, not trying to make excuses, but the idea is, there had to be a reason why Flybar and Mole sold alcohol on the rooftop.
Who owns the license?
Excuse me, Ms. Chairman, if you can recognize?
I'm sorry?
Can we recognize, sir?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Who owns the license?
Maya Tampa.
Maya Tampa, so we're subleasing the licenses to Flybar and Mole Iabuela, I'm probably can't pronounce the name right, is that what, is that what we're saying?
No, it's my understanding that, that it was sold, so this is now owned by Maya Tampa. Maya Tampa purchased the alcohol license, and now it is in the shoes of what Flybar had before. It merely conveyed what Flybar had to Maya Tampa, or I'll say, Mole Iabuela operates as Flybar was permitted to.
Any other questions or comments?
Ms. Chair, to follow up on that question, what relationship does the new owner have to the old owner, personal or otherwise?
I, I don't know there is any, I, I, but I also don't know. I, my, my firm didn't handle that, and that was something I wasn't involved with at all.
So you know of no relationship, one way or the other, with the old owner?
That's, that's correct.
On, on your, on your doc, if I may continue, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
On your document, on the last page, it says, and where you have highlighted, it says right, right above that, conditioned to operate as a restaurant. Is there also dining on the, on the top floor?
There is.
And it's used as a restaurant type of dining, and not just some sort of buffet, to, to have the appropriate amount of food served for the alcohol?
That, that's correct. I, I've sat up there and, and had dinner, I, I, at least from discussions with my client, that was standard. It was just another place where people could sit, and, as if they were in the restaurant. But at least, I wanted to address the, the alcohol issue first, that I think that is an important issue, and then what did Mole Iabuela do once it learned of it, or at least once I had any contact, which would have been right around the end of May, early June, was they stopped selling alcohol on the rooftop immediately. And then probably a week and a half later, they simply closed, to try to figure out what to do with the COVID. And at least my discussions with the client, without getting in any great detail, attorney-client privilege, the client was confused as to the COVID guidelines, and whether or not that was an enforceable law. Despite being told, apparently repeatedly by law enforcement, that at least was the discussions I had early on, and Mole Iabuela decided to close to decide what to do, how to become COVID compliant, and otherwise moving forward. It made, it made that decision early on, before it needed to close, it chose to close. And at least as far as the misconduct that the council has heard, the lieutenant had no personal knowledge of any sort of wrongdoing. He merely looked over some reports and compiling, and, and I do understand this is quasi-judicial in nature, it's not the, the strict requirements of, say, the rules of evidence, but again, this is something important enough that could involve the suspension or revocation of a license, and the loss of some seventy-seven, seventy-eight employees, and, and a business already having problems, live testimony of personal knowledge, which seemed to be important. And what the council did here was, the crime protection officer, crime prevention officer, apologies, testified that his first dealings with any sort of problems was on the twenty-third of May, and it extended until the twenty-ninth of May. And that it was some overcrowding, some loud music, but there were no arrests, there were no charges, there were no tickets. And then the next step was, what did Mole Iabuela do to address the problems? And you heard Ms., Ms. Johnson-Velez talk about?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I see a hand up.
No, I was gonna let you finish, but I did have a question for you.
I'm, I'm not a fan of keep talking when someone, someone needs to ask me a question.
It's quasi-judicial, not judicial. And have you been given a copy of this notebook, or?
I have not.
Okay, have you been provided with what's under tab ten, that Ms. Johnson-Velez provided to us, which is, appears to be perhaps, maybe a hundred pages of police reports?
I have not.
Ms. Johnson-Velez, is that something that, that had, had been made available to counsel? I mean, obviously, it's the basis.
Right, this, well, it was uploaded.
It's the evidentiary basis for, for what we're talking about, so.
Right, it was, it was uploaded to, I mean, it's part of the record for this agenda item, and for, for this hearing.
Right, so counsel says he hasn't seen this, was it, did you offer to them, to, to his firm at any time, or, I'm just trying to figure out, it's an unusual process we're in, you know?
Right, 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 exactly, so I did.
There's probably no discovery or anything like that.
Right, exactly. So it was, it was uploaded similar to what, what we do in quasi-judicial, in the quasi-judicial realm.
Oh, so, so it was part of, it was part of our, part of our city sire?
Correct, if you.
Program, it's uploaded into the clerk's system.
Correct. It was filed with.
Mr. Dingfelder, Martin Shelby here, I just wanted to let you know that I did confirm during this hearing, that that packet was in fact uploaded, that the binder has been uploaded to Sire. And I was going to suggest that counsel, during this hearing, make a motion to receive and file that, to make that part of the record, upon which you can base your decision. Now, I don't know whether, this is not court, obviously, and I don't know whether counsel, have you, have you been in contact with the city to get the information, the background material relative to this, besides having public access to review it online?
No, I've, I've had repeated contact, and in fact, from the very beginning of this, I was in contact with Ms. Wells, who'd actually come from my office over to the city of Tampa, and we worked out a stipulation, the only thing left was, the stipulation said there'd be no penalties, we would agree to follow all COVID protocols, and everything, given that Mr. Frank, Mr. Pescante and his business partner had been removed from Maya Tampa permanently, that they were substantial owners and operators and managers, and at great expense have been kicked out of the organization in their entirety. And we came down to what to do with the rooftop, couldn't decide on it, and then Ms. Johnson-Velez stepped in, and I've been in repeated contact with her as well. But at no time were there any discussions that this would be, there'd be a binder, especially of some sort of a summary of police reports, or the like that would go in evidence. Now, in fairness, I didn't ask her what evidence she intended to produce as part of this, it was, it was never addressed, one, one way or the other.
Councilman Moran.
Thank you. Counselor, I'd just like to ask a couple of questions regarding you and your client. How long have you been your attorney for that client?
I have been the attorney for Franklin Manor back when Franklin Manor was originally sued on the nuisance matter, and, and I recognize a handful of you that I, I had the, the interesting afternoon to, to go over some of those issues, and it was right around that time that there were some of the same owners, some of the same operators, so I, so it was, it was somewhere in that time I, I started handling some matters, but it wasn't until this, this dealing, the end of May, early June, when I was contacted with, look, we went through the problems with Franklin Manor, can you help us with Mole Iabuela?
Then I, I would have to make an assumption that they called you when the police interviewed them?
I, I don't know the timeframe of, of when they contacted me, they, or at least I can tell you, it was the end of May, so certainly it was post-police contact.
But you were aware that there was something going on with your client and TPD?
Yes.
And, and at that time, as time goes on, did it ever tell you that the city was looking into revocation of a license for some period of time?
They, they shared me, they shared with me the, the notice, or at least they shared with me some of the documentation, and then Ms. Wells from the city of Tampa presented additional copies of the notices, and then I think Ms. Johnson-Velez did as well.
Did you ever call the police department to get a record of what happened?
I, I, I did not.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Citron.
Thank you very much. Does your employees ever tell you about how many times either TPD or fire rescue came in? Was it reported at, at weekly, monthly briefings? Hey boss, we got, we have a problem?
It was my understanding that it was right that last week or so of May is when, I think, I think I agree with the crime prevention officer, that it was right around that last week or so was when there were pretty constant inspections, and, and that's when things seemed to be really boiling over, and I believe I was sought for advice concerning, well, what is the effect of this executive order? It's called COVID guidelines, what are the effects of these things? And at that point, there were discussions, and really, this was a business that was really being operated more so on weekends than it was during the week, so it wasn't quite the daily meeting type, type situation when I got involved, it was one that I think that some of the managers who have since been ousted were, were discussing what to do next, where, what's going on in the next, how to deal with, with, whether they're violations, what they could do moving forward, what, what's permissible. So I, I, I don't know if I answered your question, but I don't think there were daily briefings, but I believe the managers at the time were talking often on what to do, as this was fairly unchartered territory.
And so you're saying that the management and ownership was aware that there was officers and fire rescue coming in?
Certainly, I, I think, I think by, by that last week or so of May is when, is when there were repeated contact with, with law enforcement and the fire marshals, and then I was contacted, I guess, right near the end of that week or so, and then the following week, I believe, is when Mole shut down, stopped selling alcohol, and tried to go internally to address the issues, as well as primarily its management problems.
One more question, Mr. Chair. Was it ever brought to the management or owner's attention that there were complaints coming from surrounding neighbors?
Yes, yes.
How long, how long had, had those complaints been going on, that you're, that you're aware of?
I'm aware that there were no problems with this location at all until the beginning of May, that there were some issues with some noise, and then it really, it really boiled over by the end of, by the end of May.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Dingfelder.
You're, you're Mr. Koenig, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking at a, an email from you to, to our chairman, but copied to Ms. Johnson-Velez, Mr. Shelby, it's dated October fifteenth, regarding the October twenty-second hearing. And it says, please be advised that this firm represents Maya Tampa LLC DBA Mole Iabuela with respect to quasi-judicial hearing scheduled for October twenty-second virtual. Given the seriousness of the accusations, coupled with the need to provide a variety of documents in defense of same, my client does not consent to the virtual hearing, et cetera. I find that interesting, and I think we need to kind of cut to the chase. You've heard testimony, you've heard Ms. Johnson-Velez is making a case on behalf of the city. You've heard testimony from the officers and from the, the fire department. I would say, even though it's quasi-judicial, it's a little more formal than most of what we do, you probably have an opportunity to cross-examine if you believe, if you dispute what these officers have to say. I think that's a right that you could take advantage of, that's up to Mr. Chairman. Additionally, you point out that you have defenses, and you have a variety of documents in, in support of your defense. I haven't heard or seen either, and I'm trying to be as respectful as possible, but it's getting late in the evening, and I think we need to move this along. The only defense I've heard so far is the defense of ignorance in terms of your client, they purchased it from a, the prior owner, the fly, they didn't know what they were getting, that sort of thing. Okay, if, if that's the defense, we can evaluate that. Is there any other defense, and do you have documents in support, and do you want to cross-examine?
So I'll, I'll try to work that back in, in reverse order, and, and thank you, is, as far as the cross-examinations, I, I agree, I think I have a right to cross-examine the witnesses, I had nothing to cross-examine them on. The first witness had no personal knowledge at all, as far as the, the TPD officer of any wrongdoings, he merely looked over what other people had done, had never been to the space. The second officer discussed some of his dealings in a short week, whereby no charges were, were filed, no arrests were made, and no, no tickets were written. A cease and desist order was provided to the organization, and that was it. So as far as cross-examinations are concerned, anything I, I needed to cross-examine, I would have. In addition to that, as far as documentation was concerned, is we had the entire file for the wet zoning applications, and that originally, the, at least as far as strategy was going to be, is to go over every one of those documents, and with Ms., Ms. Doc, or whoever the representative would be for zoning and licensing for each and every one. So as far as whether we had more documents then, or less documents now, doesn't make a difference, is that the strategy, as we have moved forward, has been less of one to challenge any of the issues, one rather one of looking at the factors that the council is to consider in rendering any sort of punishment. And that is the severity of the violations, which we've talked about, those, that there have been no tickets written, even, there are some other businesses that have been similar, albeit may not have been as prevalent as others. What has Mole done since the violations? It shut down business at great expense and resources, it got rid of the problem, it got rid of the two individuals who had a substantial ownership stake, and were the named managers of the restaurant that couldn't be easily revoked. It was all removed, they were removed, and there have been no problems, there's been no testimony, even conglomerations of reports, there's been a single problem since the end of May. Nor will there be in the future, is that this company understands it's under the microscope at this point, and moving forward, it's dealing with COVID problems the same as all the other restaurants. The employees can't go over to other restaurants and find other restaurants jobs.
Can I interrupt you once, one more second? Did you bring any of your clients here to testify as to that? It's all fine and good, you look, seem like a, a great young man and a bright attorney, and I know your firm well, but do you have anybody here to testify to give us those kind of assurances?
No, Your Honor, because, sorry, no, Councilman, there's no chair, is that, is that those types of, of platitudes and promises aren't gonna get us anywhere. Rather, it is what has been done, is what has been done, what kind of complaints have occurred since the end of May, and the answer is none. We've applied for the proper licensing and moving forward.
Ms. Chairman.
Counselor Goode.
I guess for me, that's my problem. Yes, you are the attorney of record that is, that is here. But we're talking about if I'm a business and I'm an owner of a business, my business is at stake. And if my business is closed, I can't make any money. And employees can't make any money either. So for you to be here and not have the owners, because this is, obviously, this is an owner issue, that no one was, was complying because there was bad ownership or split ownership, whatever, but no one who's going to be in charge or the new owners or the, the split owners or the new owners are here to say, to make their case that we're going to make sure that these things don't happen going forward, that we've have protocols and standards and SOPs in place now. I, I guess that's the problem I'm having. And as you recall, that's the first thing I asked when you came up, are, are you representing owners? Are anybody else here to, to talk about, because since you made a statement going forward. So I can hear what you say, but you're just a paid person to talk for the owners. So that's what, what I look at, because you're not going to be there. The, it's the owner's business, and they're going to be there hiring managers or whatever. So what assurance do I have that they're going to hire people who experience running bars or running a, a, a club with alcohol, whatever? I just hear from you. So that's kind of the problem I really have at this point, that I've got no assurances. I don't, I don't know what's going to be happening down at that place down there. I just have you just trying to be in defense to try to talk for the owners. But yet, it's their business, not yours.
Well, what I, what I would respectfully request, if, if that is an important enough issue, and again, the ownership doesn't know what it's going to do with the business. If, if, if we weren't in COVID, it, it might be different to say, well, here's our long-term plan. Right now, the ownership may sell. It, it may try to keep this thing limping along as best it can. It doesn't know. And quite honestly and candidly, that's the reason that there's not an owner representative here who would come in and say, I, I'm sorry, I don't know what we're going to do with COVID. We, we may sell it next week. We, we don't know what we're going to do.
But you're applying for permits, correct?
We're applying, we're, we're trying to fix the problem of the, of the rooftop zoning. I'm sorry, the, the rooftop licensing. That's, that's the purpose of the new special use permit. It isn't to otherwise get brand new licensing to carry. It's to fix, it's to fix the problem. And, and if it is a, if it is a large enough issue that the council says, look, we really want to hear from ownership, even if he doesn't know what he's going to do with it, I would respectfully request a continuance to the next available date. And I'll have someone here to say, look, here's my plan, here's what I'm doing. But at least back in that first hearing, we didn't know. And I don't want to go in and say, I, I don't know what I'm going to do, and I can't promise you something if I still don't know what the long-term plan of this, this property is with COVID. They, they don't know, even if it does everything perfectly, it's going to survive this irrespective of, of a suspension or other penalty.
Well, that, that's the problem for me, not having ownership to say anything but having their attorney. But yet, attorneys come and go, and you can tell me one thing, but yet I still haven't heard from the business owners who actually own the license who are going to run the bar or run the, their restaurant, whatever they're running. So.
Counselor Miranda.
Thank you very much. From what I'm hearing, Counselor, is a, it's not this government or any government or any entity that regulates alcohol zonings to some degree, to be the one responsible to see that the employees understand all the laws regulating whatever license they have, either a complete license or what floor or what. That, that's not our burden. The burden is on the person who bought it. Your client is the one that's got the burden, not us. We're trying to talk like we have the burden. No, no, no. The burden is on your client at the time that they purchase something, know what they purchase. It's up to the burden of your client to understand what kind of license they have, where to serve or not to serve, not mine. They're the ones that made the deal, not us. They're the ones either made the deal, made a good deal or a bad deal. Or they're the ones that made the deal not knowing what they made. So the burden of proof, I don't feel that we have to prove anything. You're the one that represent the proof that they have to apply to their employees on what to do and not to do with the liquor license, not us.
I agree.
Thank you.
My.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, Martin Shelby here.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Ms. Johnson-Velez, you have something that she needs to communicate?
Oh, I just, I just wanted to remind counsel, just with respect to the officers, Mr. Conan suggested doesn't have personal knowledge. So I just wanted to remind counsel, I believe there were 19 surrounding neighbors who had signed up to speak to this item.
Yes.
And they might.
Yes.
Provide some of that personal knowledge.
Before we go to the registered speakers, my problem is this. We had a stay-at-home order from the governor, from the municipality. Businesses shut down for 30 days, whatever it was. Restaurants couldn't serve, bars couldn't serve, nightclubs weren't open. And then May comes along, and the state is reopening in phases, 25% capacity at restaurants, 50% capacity. I don't remember the schedule. But on social media, a video appears of, I think it was Molea Ibuella, packed to the, you know, packed as, as, as has been stated in, in the recollections here by the, by the individuals. The photographs that we saw, crowds outside, as it was a regular Thursday night, you know, college party. Everyone else knew, not everyone else because of the people in violation, but people knew that there were rules. People knew that we were opening in phases. People knew that the governor's orders were going, you know, little by little. Yet, this restaurant was in blatant violation, knowing, you know, it's just, I think back to Franklin Manor when there were issues on noise and whatnot. And some of the attitudes of some of the people that are no longer affiliated with the company. And it was, you know, I'm not going to repeat because it was just foul language, bad language, bad attitudes. But I think it was, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than ask for permission. That's one thing. But this was just, they felt like doing whatever they wanted to do. And those individuals, or one in particular who's not with the company, has created such a problem. Because Molea Ibuella, I assume it's still boarded up. Last time I saw, the, the place was boarded up, Franklin Manor was boarded up. There were protests outside because I was down there to see how it was and what was going on. But it's just a blatant lack of respect that has brought it to this problem. It's not about serving alcohol on the rooftop and not knowing. It's completely violating the rules in place while other businesses were closed, while other businesses were serving at 25% capacity or takeout only, or not serving alcohol at all. Because I was getting complaints. One, one gentleman even asked, can you reach out to the governor so he can lift the stay on alcoholic beverage, you know, bars not being able to serve, which I couldn't do. But that's it. I mean, if they would have followed the rules and not had these wild parties in violation, we wouldn't be here today with these discussions. I mean, you're the attorney. I understand the clients are not here, that some of the people are not, no longer involved. But this could have been avoided. So here we are. Having said that, we have, I believe, 12 registered speakers still on the line for public comment.
If I may only just respond to what you just said?
Yes, if you want to.
Is, is, I agree. This was blatant irresponsibility. It was ignoring the rules. It was putting people in, in potential harms way. But there were two people who ran everything, had a huge ownership stake, and all the, the remaining, the current owners and current managers could do is work out getting rid of these guys. And I do understand it sounds, hey, these are the bad guys. Don't punish us. They're the ones who did it. But at the end of this, they are removed, the problem is addressed, and now any punishment levied is on the remaining people. And I understand that's a, a, a part of accountability. But I just want to remind, at great expense and great resources spent getting rid of these guys to resolve the problem permanently, any other punishment is on those who weren't making the decisions. Those are now trying to fix the problems and try to keep this afloat. Again, I understand accountability, and, and you're going to do whatever you find is right and equitable. But as far as how to address the problem, how to address someone like this guy who wrote those emails about the City of Tampa and this council is, is unheard of. And running him out and running out his business partner is, is all at this point that the business could do and try to keep it afloat.
And at the end of the day, it's a shame because it's a, it's a good business. I mean, they make money, you know, the nocturnal group or whoever they are, or whatever it is. It's a shame to see them get to the point of having to board up because certain things were said, you know, months ago that triggered some, some protests in that, in that part of town, whatever. I mean, you know, you said everything that needs to be said.
Mr. Chairman, if we can, just before we take the comment, and, and if legal or Ms. Ladok wishes to add to this, what I'm about to say, I, I would welcome that. But how many times has counsel been heard, how, how many times has counsel heard the, the statement? This special use runs with the land. And quite frankly, it's, there is a, a property that's associated with these conditions. And irrespective, it is the obligation of perhaps multiple parties, but ultimately, that property has to comply with certain conditions in order to have that special use. And if it violates, if those special use conditions are violated, what suffers is the property's right to continue to have that special use. So I think what's important to look at is the fact that there is a special use and that there is a specific property which is tracked by land development that is attached to that right. So I suggest that you take a look at that rather than look at who is to blame for this because ultimately, it runs with the land. And I'll leave it at that if there's something else.
Counselor Vera.
And thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I was actually going to say something to the effect of what our esteemed attorney, Mr. Shelby, said. I kind of look at it too, not literally, but kind of like vicarious liability, which is, you know, you have an employee working for you, they commit it toward, and of course, in scope, you're liable for it as the employer. It's not 100% the same. Is there, your, the, the partners? I, I get that. I think one of the things that frustrates people is that if the, these leftover partners are saying, hey, look, we're the good guys, or we're the good gals, whatever, right, that they're not here to express it. Obviously, you're their fine, capable attorney from, a great attorney from one of the best firms in Tampa. But I think that's something that frustrates us. Obviously, it's their right to be represented by outstanding counsel. But just the fact that they're not here, I think, leaves something to be desired. I personally don't think it's grounds for a continuance. That's, that, that, that was their, their choice. But I think that ultimately, you, you know, get the benefit of the detriment of the business associations that you keep. And like our attorney said, it runs with the land. And, and that's unfortunate. Is, is it fair to them if they did it, no one didn't have reason to, to know at all that this was occurring? Very unfair. But, you know, it, that's just how it is, I guess. But I'll stop talking because it's getting late. I'm going to say something dumb. Thank you.
Counselor Dean Felger.
Ms. Johnson-Velez, will you, will you, I've been looking through this amazing notebook that you put together and huge amount of work that you put into this. But will you tell us what the bottom line is in terms of what our options are this evening after we hear all the testimony and the people who are waiting?
Yeah.
What our options are in terms of suspension or revocation?
Certainly. Susan Johnson-Velez, Senior Assistant City Attorney. So because this would be a first violation for this property, council is limited to the, a maximum of 30-day suspension. When you get to a second situation like this, a second hearing like this, you can consider a 60-day suspension maximum. A third violation, you can consider a 90-day suspension. And then on the fourth and subsequent, you can consider revocation.
Okay. Because I saw revocation as an option there, but you're saying it's step by step.
It is a step, it is a step by step. Yes.
All right. I just wanted to put that in context to counsel.
All right. Mr. Chair, Ms. Johnson-Velez.
Yes, sir.
Can we also say that 30-day also includes the pending special permits that, that are being requested? 30 days on the, on the, on the alcohol cells they have now, plus nothing more in those special use that are pending for 30 days?
Well, I, I would suggest let's, maybe.
Let's get through this, yes, but I'm.
Hear all the evidence first and then, okay. So maybe we have 12.
We have 10 people registered online to speak publicly. Mr. Shelby, do I have to swear everybody in?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, we'll start with public comment. The online registered folks, if they want to come on, I have a list here. We'll swear you in before you speak. All right. All right. Robert V. shows a blue screen. I'm sorry, Robert Y.
My camera's on. I'm not sure why it's blue.
Okay.
Can you hear?
I can hear you, but we can't see you. It's just, it's just blue. Scott Tankle is there. All right.
Let's hear from Scott.
We have Randall. We have Deborah Oxley. All right. So let's swear in Scott, Randall, and Deborah. Raise your right hand. They're going to swear you in.
Do you swear affirm you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Scott, if you'd like to begin, you have three minutes. Please state your name, and we'll go from there. You're muted, sir. Scott, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Scott Tankle. I am the board president of the residences of Franklin Street, which sits just south of Molea Ibuella. The building consists of 42 units of one, two, and three-bedroom units. Medical professionals live here, elderly people live here, and families live here. These are, some of the units are three-bedroom. I'm here to give a voice to our residents who lost many hours of sleep and whose right of quiet enjoyment of their residences was violated by Molea Ibuella. Molea Ibuella, before having closed its doors, engaged in reckless, illegal, and destructive behavior. The restaurant, from the management and the owners down, encouraged and promoted a culture reminiscent of a nightclub, as we've heard. Management and staff, they thumbed their noses at the city's police, the fire marshal, the restrictions intended to stop the spread of COVID-19 in our city, which we're still fighting. How many cases of COVID spread at their parties? Night after night, for weeks, our residents were forced to call police begging for assistance. The issues we routinely faced include, included thumping bass from the rooftop, which included screaming from the rooftop, shattering bottles, fights, vehicles revving their engines and peeling out outside of the restaurant, many, many incidents of documented public urination because the bar and nightclub that they were running did not have adequate restrooms for their patrons. Our story began on May 5th, when Molea was permitted to reopen and threw a massive Cinco de Mayo party that was picked up by local news. From that point, every Tuesday, Taco Tuesday, wind down Wednesday, thirsty Thursday, Friday celebration, Saturday, all-you-can-drink brunch Sunday, six days of the week, we suffered from them. It was mayhem after mayhem. And mind you, this was supposed to be a restaurant. Our calls to the police were often in vain because the police either had to deal with irate owners from our building who couldn't sleep, or management from Molea who were disregarding them. They were largely ineffective. And the second the police would leave, the music would turn right back up, and we would seem like fools calling again. The police just did not want to deal with us. No disrespect to them, but I, I understand where they're coming from. There is no reason to believe that any additional restrictions imposed on Molea will be followed. We've witnessed their behavior with Franklin Manor. And we've witnessed their behavior flaunting and disregarding the COVID violations. They are unrepentant. They, they sent their attorney. They couldn't even show up to speak on their own behalf. Here we are, our residents sat on, in the hall and on our computers for six hours to speak our minds, yet the owner, who is pretending that this business means so much to him, couldn't be bothered to show up. We heard tonight from the police that they were the most egregious of violators, and they have no respect for our neighborhood. They were confused by the law. Ignorance of the law is not an excuse. It's not satisfactory. We have personal knowledge. Molea's attorney said that the officers do not have personal knowledge. The city attorney does not have personal knowledge. We suffered every single night for over a month, not to mention the nights prior to that, prior to COVID, that they also disregarded any social bounds or social norms. Again, contrary to Molea's attorney's suggestion, Molea did not shut down to figure out how to deal with COVID. They shut down June 2nd because. They shut down June 2nd because their employee had a racial meltdown online. That's why they shut down, not because they needed to figure out how to operate COVID. Let that be known.
Thank you very much.
The owners, again, could not be bothered. I have nothing more to say. I hope you take our case seriously.
Thank you very much.
Board President, I would just say one more thing. We are not asking for a suspension. We are asking for a revocation of their alcohol license.
Thank you very much. Randall?
Hi, my name's Randall Matulka. I am in Unit 504, which is directly overlooking the rooftop bar of Molee Abuela. I had a perfect view to see them still pouring drinks behind the bar, even after the cops came to shut them down and said, "No more drinks up there." It all started, like Mr. Tankle said, on May 5th, Cinco de Mayo. It was standing room only on the rooftop bar. On, I couldn't sleep because of the music, even through our stormproof windows, which would be up until 3:00 a.m. I'd be going outside because I'd be hearing the fights, the music, everything that was going on. I'd have, many videos that were provided were possibly from me. People standing out in the streets, still with their drink in their hand, waiting for their Ubers, drunk and not being able to stand up. Public urination right on the building when there's a fight right next door in the parking lot. 10 times in the month of May, I called the police. And I actually had to leave for a full week because I couldn't sleep. I am a physician who lives here and I work with car accidents. So I was an essential worker this entire time. And the worst nights were Tuesdays and Thursdays. And that's the middle of the work week. And that's the middle of the time I was trying to help people and I was a zombie trying to help anyone. I would also like to point out that I did see them do the, on May 28th, how officers mentioned that they provided the stop of sell liquor at the rooftop bar. They took the bottles off of the top of the bar, but they were still underneath. So they were pulling them out and pouring drinks for them. And I could see it directly straight from my balcony as the cops were still on the rooftop. And then when they left, they still had 11 security officers on the rooftop bar, which I don't see the point of having 11 security officers or security personnel for a restaurant. And then on May 30th, I have a video that it actually showed bottle service girls carrying a bottle of champagne up to the rooftop bar with lights and dancing and trying to have fun with the crowd, which is two days after that was given. And I would also just like to say that I agree that they did not choose to close. They boarded up and that's why they have not had any issue since that day.
Thank you very much. Deborah?
Yes. My name is Deborah Oxley. Hold on one second. And I live in the residence as well, in Unit 406. After a lot of days and weeks of putting up with these calls and things, or, I'm sorry, putting up with all this noise outside, we like to use our windows open as we have, not only can you hear the whistle background. It got to be ridiculous. We share these girls screaming outside at 3:00 in the morning. We check to see if there's any problems, but out of the case to be. Overall, I just agree with what has been said by Scott and by Randall. We have lots of videos. They did board it up just because of the verbiage that was put out there. So anyways, that's all I have to say for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Demaro and Mr. Yee, if you could raise your right hand so we can swear you in before you speak.
Do you swear or affirm you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I will.
Thank you. I will.
Robert Yee, go ahead, sir.
Yes. Good evening, counsel. And you've already heard a lot of egregious items about Molee Abuela. I originally made an online complaint to Councilman Goode's on May 18 via Tampa.gov. My issue was loud music, unruly patrons on the sidewalk and on our porches. I live in a building just to the north of Molee Abuela. On February 19th, when Molee opened, we were glad because it seemed like it was going to be an upscale restaurant with Spanish, Mediterranean, Mexican food. But in October 2019, they started, I guess they called it Taco Tuesday and Latin Night Tuesday. That brought loud music, drink specials, which also brought in a nightclub party growers rather than a restaurant crowd. Music would resonate throughout the neighborhood. Complaints about the loud music by my neighbors that live on the end unit of my building next door to the restaurant were unresolved by the restaurant. They would promise to turn it down, but it never lasted very long. In May of 2020, Molee Abuela made the transformation from being a restaurant with occasional music to a full-blown raucous nightclub with loud music, crowds of people that seriously degraded quality of life for the surrounding neighborhood. Loud music blasted from the rooftop from around 10:00 p.m. until they closed at 3:00 a.m. The building was packed on both the first floor and on the rooftop. So the overflow crowd of noisy people lined up outside, waiting to get in while they congregated in bunches outside on the sidewalk. And some would sit on our porches and also come around the back of our building to urinate. Cars with booming music would troll up and down Franklin Street. Fights would break out almost nightly in the parking lots across the street from the restaurant. My wife and I, we didn't feel safe to walk outside of our building after 9:00 p.m. because of the noisy crowds on the sidewalk and even in our driveway. Nightly complaints were made to TPD about the loud music, which would be turned down somewhat, only to be returned to blasting levels five or 10 minutes after the police officer left. Verbal complaints to the owners and management on-site were met with, "We want to be good neighbors, but we're running a business." I took this to mean that they expected us to live with what we saw as a degradation of our neighborhood quality and quality of life in favor of their business. Finally, as you already know, Molee Abuela is surrounded by three multi-unit residence buildings, which are Franklin Street City Lofts, my building, the residence on Franklin Street, which has 40 units in it, and the historical Arlington Hotel across the street. We are over 100 tax-paying residents that would like some level of peace and quiet in our neighborhood during the evening and night hours. We are unable to get this with a noisy nightclub next door. And I, like Scott earlier said, I have no confidence that they will not do the same thing if you allow them to continue to operate. They were not operating as a nightclub, excuse me, as a restaurant. They were operating as a raucous nightclub, which brought along the usual crowds of noisy people that staggered out in parking lots nightly. We were awaking, 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the morning, until the crowds disappeared. And I don't know what else I could add other than, I see my three minutes up. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Demaro. You're muted, sir. You have to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is James Demaro. I live at 1108 North Franklin Street, Department 406. And I'm here to tell you that I have never been so frightened about a situation as developed every evening that the Molee Abuela was allowed to be open after 11:00 p.m. It operated fully and totally as a bar. It was incredible, the number of cars in the parking lots. It was a traffic jam every night, hundreds of people waiting outside to get in, nobody observing COVID. And I'm frankly appalled at the number of times that we, as a neighborhood association, as individual peoples, called the police department. And they came. They did come. And they did see what we saw. But how come nobody filed any complaints? I don't understand why. I can't believe that I'm living in a city that allows, does anybody on the council remember Kitty Genovese, 1964, Manhattan? She got stabbed to death outside of buildings where nobody paid any attention to her screams. That's the kind of noises that was going on in a residential neighborhood at 1:00, 2:00, and 3:00 o'clock in the morning, two to three nights a week. It was just horrible. I've never seen anything like it before in my life. And I'm 72 years old. And I hope I don't ever see this again. If, God forbid, we're allowed to have this restaurant open again, I would like it to be a restaurant that closes at 11:00 and everybody goes home. We had broken bottles in the street. We had people urinating everywhere. There were people of questionable purposes walking up and down the streets. It was just incredible. It was everything that everyone has said before. I have some videos of it. It's just something that nobody should have to live through. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you very much. I see five people on the screen that want to speak. Please raise your right hand. We're going to swear you in before you speak.
Do you swear or affirm you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. First one is Travis. You have three minutes. Go ahead, sir. You're muted. Unmute yourself.
My name is Travis Moore. I'm a property owner adjacent to Molee on the north. And I just want to say I completely attest to the accuracy of everyone speaking before me. I too am a doctor. I work in the morning. And the biggest thing that got to us was the loud music and the violence and everything that came with it. The sense of safety, music, cars blaring. So it's, I guess, in my opinion, it's not so much the liquor laws that is the issue. I think it's more, these people can't be trusted. They should really have restaurant capabilities. They're really destroying our property values and our livelihood in the city. And I think it's something that really needs to be addressed, if at all possible. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up is Sergio.
Hello, counsel. Thank you. I live in the building just east of Molee Abuela at 12291 Franklin Street. And I agree with everything everyone said. And if possible, I wanted to, would I be able to yield my time to Fernando Perez?
Uh... I don't think we're doing that. We don't, we don't do that on virtual.
Okay, then. I'll be short, but just one thing. I did want to reiterate the point that they closed because there was a huge backlash on social media based on racial comments that were made by one of the promoters, managers, operators. They didn't close because they were trying to get their act together. COVID, very well documented. I personally saw it. I know a bunch of people that personally saw it while they closed and had to board up. So that is what happened. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fernando Perez.
Thank you. My name is Fernando Perez. I live at 1212 North Franklin. I'm part of Franklin City Lofts. And my property, my specific residence, is the closest one to Molee. We are 50 feet away. My front door is 50 feet away from their front door. I echo everything everyone has said. In addition to that, because we're right there, the front of my property is sort of where everybody goes from Molee when they need to, you know, smoke a joint or engage in some public sex or, you know, everything else that everybody's mentioned. There is a feeling of unease. And it's, you don't want to look at just COVID violations and things like that. What you need to focus on is the disruption to the neighborhood that these people created. They were basically destroying what is really a beautiful and very unique neighborhood in downtown Tampa. We've been living there for almost 14 years. And, you know, Fly was there for a while. Never had a problem with them. The problem started with these people. And it didn't start in May. We had noise problems with them pretty much from a couple of months after they opened. Initially, they were receptive. They would turn the music down. But eventually, they would stop responding. I had the text numbers, the mobile numbers for every one of the managers. And after a while, they just ignored us. And that's when I started calling the police in December. Then they were closed for a while. And then you heard what was going on in May. Total disregard for the community. I wanted to clarify a couple of things that Mr. Koenig had said. Don't believe for a second that these are different owners. The people that currently own the property are involved with the people that are supposedly out, which I don't believe is happening either. This is the same crowd that was involved with Franklin Manor and all the problems there. And to give you another example, the head manager at Molee is now the front person at the restaurant that's going to replace Trattoria. Nobody has changed. All they've done is a little shell game with the corporations, moved some names around, but the same people are still involved in this. And the current owners, everything that was done at Franklin Manor, everything that was done at Molee was done with their complete knowledge and acceptance. So don't believe that things have changed. And that's why we don't believe that if they're allowed to continue to operate, that anything's going to change. This is a group that looks at every opportunity to push the envelope and see what laws they can violate. That's their nature and that's what they're going to keep doing. So if they're allowed to continue to operate, it's just a matter of time before we're here before you again. Unfortunately, I thought you could revoke their beverage license completely. I understand from the city attorney that's not possible. That's a change because that's what should, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Robert?
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, counsel. My name is Robert Isles. I live at 1214 North Franklin. I live actually in between Fernando and Travis Moore. And I would have to say, and I'd like to address a few very factual things. With all due respect, the petitioning entity has not demonstrated anything that would show they deserve a reinstatement of any sort, even just 30 days. And there are a host of reasons. There were no complaints, as we have stated, after the end of May because Molee closed due to Mr. Piscante's social media habits. And for that, we, as the residents, paid with days and days of protest that went up and down Franklin Street in front of our house. And to your point, Mr. Chairman, I think you witnessed some of that firsthand. The issues that have been cited by Susan Johnson-Velez were never issues in the 10 years of Flybar's existence. And we have lived in this building for almost 11 years. The events cited were not random either. They were nightly, as the data and evidence files that you guys have been given show. If you look at the police requests, the call records, the photos, the video, all of that has been submitted to you all for review in that binder. And it was every day of the week. And, you know, in fact, Mr. Koenig's contention about they only operated on weekends is incorrect because your own fire marshal tonight cited his visit on May 27th, which was a Wednesday. And I would invite, as probably the penultimate example, reference the videos that were submitted that show one night, May 31st, in which you will see in the course of five hours, public intoxication, disorderly conduct, noise ordinance violations, violence, a hidden run in the parking lot across the street, public urination where the guy walked out across the street in front of Molee staff, dropped his pants, and peed on a tree in full view of that. So to say that this was sort of limited is sort of ludicrous. Molee's actions got to a point where they required nearly constant contact from all of us with TPD and others, to the point where we felt like we were taking them away from other things they should be doing. And in fact, we, as the residents, were submitting daily incident reports every day for what had happened the night before. And I'm not the only person here, but, you know, I had calls and communication on at least six of the dates that Ms. Johnson-Velez referenced this evening. And I think with regard to Molee's reaction, they were completely non-responsive to resident requests and input. They even had a meeting with the three HOA presidents of our buildings, at which nothing actually happened. And instead, Mr. Piscante and Anderson and their crew decided to be antagonistic and to use Mr. Koenig's own language to challenge and taunt the residents, which is really unacceptable. And, you know, the result for all of us was an ongoing disruption of our neighborhood quality of life. We experienced property damage, public trash, furman, you know, overall adverse impact on our properties, and even an unwillingness of some prospective tenants to rent office space in the commercial space across the street. And Molee and Mr. Koenig have claimed to have eliminated the bad apples. But a quick look at Two Goons 2.0 LLC, which is listed as being solely occupied by Mr. Piscante and Anderson, is actually currently listed as a 35% owner in MYA Tampa's corporate structure. So, you know, I might point out that even the petitioner's business partners, the guys in Two Goons, look at how they've chosen to name their LLC. If that doesn't give you an example of their approach to doing business. So I think in closing, Mr. Dahmer has repeatedly asserted that the residents do not want anything operating on his property. And nothing could be further from the truth. What we want is a business that operates within defined guidelines and doesn't adversely affect the neighborhood. And that's exactly what Flybar- And that's exactly what Flybar was. And so therefore, you know, I'm in complete opposition to the petitioner being granted the permits they're requesting. And in fact, I think it would do good for the council to take a look at Hyde Park Village as an example of how restaurants and bars can coexist with mid-density residential property. Those are businesses, and, and, you know, the, the restaurant called Meat Market is probably the closest thing you might find to what Molee was. That business closes at twelve AM completely and actually does quite well financially without disrupting the quality of life for the residents.
Thank you very much.
So I think that is the second thing to look at, and I appreciate the time to address you all this evening.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Jones.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Jones. I live at 1229 North Franklin Street, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Homeowners Association of the Arlington, which is my building where I live, and I'm a property owner. I would echo the things that you've already heard. I'm not going to repeat those. They're all true. It was, it was a terrible situation for those of us that live in these buildings, especially beginning, at the beginning of May and all the way through May. Molee's operation in May made life miserable for the residents. And when I say miserable, I'm going to give you some specific examples that I personally witnessed myself. On Tuesday, a Tuesday, May twelfth, at about twelve-thirty in the morning, I sat straight up in bed, was woken from a dead sleep because of an air horn that the DJ was playing on the roof. And then he came on his speaker and started talking. Those are the types of things that were happening. On Saturday, May sixteenth, I had people on the backside of our building, two different units that were on the backside, far away from Molee, that were woken up in the middle of the night by the noise. That's how loud it was. We had five different residents that complained in that week because of the noise, because of the trash, because of the crowds. On Thursday, the twenty-first of May, there were screeching tires. There was a loud crowd. That was all happening at midnight that woke me up personally. On Saturday, May twenty-third, around two-thirty in the morning, the buildings had set up different coned areas to try to keep these unruly crowds out ourselves from driveways and places they shouldn't be. I personally witnessed people from Molee, their crowd, moving those cones out of the way so that they could then take advantage of parking lots they weren't supposed to be in, sit outside their cars, party outside their cars with what appeared to be alcoholic beverages, not inside that restaurant at all, loudly screaming, playing music, doing the whole thing. On Tuesday, again, another Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, I was woken up myself, and I was so angry that night, I marched over there and demanded to speak to the owners. I was mad as a hornet, and I mean mad. By this time, what you have to understand is that we didn't know what night it was going to happen. We didn't know how bad it was going to be, and the anxiety levels that we had just trying to anticipate what was going to happen were unbearable. A lot of us are professionals. We have actual jobs that we have to do at, you know, nine to five hours, and this was unacceptable. On Friday, May twenty-ninth, I was woken up twice during the night, and there was a loud commotion. A lot of us went outside. We heard a fight occurring over in the seven-one-seven parking lot. And my understanding is you have a video of that fight in part of your materials. So that's what we actually witnessed. From my patio, I have a vantage point up inside that building, and I watched when they moved all of the tables out. It was a standing-room-only nightclub. They were packed in there like sardines, clearly in excess of the number of people that they were permitted, especially at a fifty percent capacity. So I have personally witnessed that, and I am testifying as to those facts. And that brings me to another statement about Mr. Caneck saying that he's, the bad apples are separated. He provided no evidence of that. All he had to do was bring his owner, I suppose, to testify that the, the people that allegedly caused all these problems are no longer involved. We don't have any evidence whatsoever that that's actually happening. All we have is a statement by the attorney that's, oh, yeah, they're no longer involved. As far as we can tell, that's not the case. We just don't have any evidence of it at all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else online to speak?
Nope. No one else is online to speak. That concludes the registered speakers.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that's here to speak on Molee Abuela? Come on up.
My name is Michael Landry. I live at eleven oh eight North Franklin Street, which is right next to the Molee. And I respectfully urge the council to revoke. I know that's not possible, but I'm, to revoke all these licenses, their alcohol permit. As we've heard tonight, employees have told TPD officers they would comply numerous times, yet still repeatedly violated various ordinances. They clearly had no intention of following the law. This ongoing behavior just shows a lack of respect for the law, and they've demonstrated over and over that they are not responsible enough to operate a business of this type within the law. And aside from echoing everything that everybody else has said, that's all I've got. So I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, and please use the opposite lecture. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Victor Giordano. I live at one one zero eight North Franklin Street, right across the street from Molee Abuela. I'd like to make this short and sweet. I wouldn't have sat here for seven hours and listened to everybody else's problems and complaints if this wasn't a big deal. It is a big deal. My wife and I have lived on eleven oh eight North Franklin for five years. When we first moved there, the Flybar was awesome. It was like the cheers of the block. And then soon as Molee took over, everything, as you heard tonight, kind of changed. So I'm in opposition to even give them a suspension. I would like a revocation of their license. With having a liquor license comes a responsibility that you all acknowledged this evening, and they are not responsible in using liquor in their building. They really did not police anything at all. So the other thing I'd like to say to Mr. Coney is it took me today, two phone calls to find out of the footprint for the alcohol zoning. Just two phone calls to the city that I got the answer that the footprint on the roof was not zoned and that the outside sidewalk area was also not zoned. It took me, seriously, twenty minutes to find out that information. So I just want to bring that to all your attention, that it wasn't very, very hard to find out that information. And I just would like to say thank you very much for taking this consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Carla Sivadra, and my husband, Henry, and I live at the residence of Franklin Street at one one zero eight North Franklin Street. We own our condominium. Our condominium building is located on the southwest corner of Franklin Street and Royal Street. Molee and Abuela is immediately across Royal Street on the northwest corner of Franklin Street and Royal Street. Our condominium is on the fourth floor, and we overlook the Molee and Abuela rooftop bar. I urge you to revoke the special use permit that Molee and Abuela holds for several reasons. A special use permit is indeed special, and it is permission to operate. In this case, a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages. It is not permission to operate a nightclub disturbing neighbors. Primarily, a special use permit is a privilege, not a right. When this privilege is abused, it should be revoked by the city council. You grant the privilege, so you should revoke the privilege in this case. This is a very simple issue and a very simple solution. You have received extensive, competent, substantial evidence proving that Molee and Abuela was abusing its privilege after repeated warnings to comply with the law, particularly in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. It is especially distressing to me and my husband that this privilege was abused during the pandemic when the risk to public health, safety, and welfare were particularly high. Our police forces were stretched to the limit, and the operators of Molee and Abuela knew better than to encourage the abuse of their privilege. Molee and Abuela chose not to comply with the rules and actually was operating as a nightclub. Therefore, Molee and Abuela should no longer be entitled to enjoy the privilege of serving alcoholic beverages, and therefore, with city council as the representative of the people and the grantor of this privilege, should be revoked the special use permit. Thank you. And I would like to give this statement and a copy of a letter that my neighbor Amanda Smith emailed to you all and to the record, if I may.
Mr. Crew, would you take it? Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay. That concludes our public comment. Councilman Dingfelter.
Carla, and, and your neighbors, I know you've been sitting here all night, and we appreciate your patience. I asked a very pointed question to our legal counsel, and I'm sure you respect their opinions, that we are limited legally in, in our ordinance to a maximum of thirty-day suspension. So no matter how we feel about the evidence and everything else, we're constrained by that. Anything else, anything more than that would be illegal. So I just, I just hope you understand that.
May I, may I comment? I, I appreciate you saying that. I just wanted to make the point of how serious we all feel about this.
I understand.
So I thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much. Councilman Veer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say, you know, I've served on city council for four years, and this is probably the, the group in public comment on, on a land use zoning, whatever issue that, that I've, how can I say it, that has most affected me, just people during a pandemic, you know, just being so affected and staying up to this, to this hour, many of you all coming here live. But especially, I'll be frank, the, the two individuals who are doctors, I, it, you know, I think everybody thought the same thing, which is, you know, here we have what, what appears to be a bad actor, what appears to be a bad actor exacerbating or worsening things during a pandemic, and you have doctors being affected, frontline medical workers. Then you have cops and firefighters. I, I think each department, I may be wrong, has had seventy, eighty people out during, because of COVID. You know, having to be on the front line of that, just, you know, it, it affected me a lot. With regards to what we can do, I'm certainly on board to doing everything we can do. To quote my, my, our friend, Councilman Goode, "Don't tell me what you can't do. Tell me what you can do." And there are things that we can do. So hope you don't mind me borrowing that, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right. Ms. Johnson Velez, is it now just the decision on council, or council's decision on what to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can I get a motion to close public comment?
So moved. Second. I just want to ask one question, Ms. Velez. Can you, just for the record, tell us what type of liquor license they have?
They have a bar lounge license. The way it was, the way the Flybar, when, when the owner of the Flybar came in, it was licensed as a bar lounge, but the condition was placed on the permit that required them to be able to sell and serve food at all times that they were open.
So is that a fifty-one forty-nine or straight alcohol?
Pardon me?
That a fifty-one forty-nine?
It is not. That, that would be a restaurant license. This is not a restaurant license.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure. I wanted to make sure. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. And I didn't ask the, the attorney, did you have any rebuttal or anything at this point?
No, it's your county, no.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Ms. Velez, what of a decision this body makes, could a written report be sent to alcohol and beverages in reference to discipline, in reference to the petition?
We can certainly, we can certainly do that. We'll work with staff to do that.
Secondly, I know that it's two separate things. If we impose whatever sanctions today, but my concern is tomorrow, with the special use is going forward, it may be a time that council may need to come back and review our ordinance in reference to if someone is going to have some discipline imposed on a thirty discipline that they're applying, that they not be granted anything until it's done. I think, to me, we're like a double-edged sword again. I'm going to give you thirty days, but yet, no, a week, while you're still applying for a special use permit. I don't understand, that makes no sense to me. I'm allowing you to apply, but right now, you're being disciplined, or you're under sanctions right now, possibly, but we're going to let you apply. I think that's something this council may need to look at in the future and legal, and come back with us with something, because I think that needs to change.
Certainly, we can do that too as well. If I, if I may, if I could just suggest, so, as you might recall at the beginning, I, I kind of read to you from the land development code section about what, what you needed to do for this hearing. So if I, if, as you consider this, you consider, so the first thing that council needs to consider is whether, based on the evidence and testimony that you've heard and received tonight, you believe there's been a violation of any one of that laundry list of, of items that I read to you. And I believe that we have presented evidence and testimony from both the city staff as well as the residents that shows that operation of the establishment has been in a manner that repeatedly or on an ongoing basis has negative secondary effects on surrounding property. You heard the significant testimony of the surrounding property owners. I believe we've also established that the establishment failed to comply with provisions of the fire prevention ordinance, as testified to by investigator Rosetti, and then failing to comply with provisions of health, health and sanitation ordinances, those being specifically the COVID executive orders with the COVID guidelines that, as I stated earlier, under state law, because they were issued under a state of emergency, had the force and effect of law. So the first step would be to determine whether there are violations. And then the second step would be to determine what penalty you would like to impose within the confines of the code.
Well, I've been looking for that sheet there. I can't find it in my material here. I've been going through all these.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. If I may just say one more thing. And I, and I understand your concern. So what I would also suggest, because of the situation that we have here with the pending special use application, so what I would suggest, even though they're independent, if you decide to impose a sanction or suspend alcoholic beverage sales, that you do so with respect to the property, to this location, 1202 North Franklin. And that way, whether it's the existing special use permit or new, alcoholic sales would be suspended for whatever time you would determine would be appropriate, and not tied to any specific special use permit.
But the penalty can only be up to thirty days, correct?
This, for a first violation, that's correct.
Councilman Dingfelter.
Mr. Chairman, if you want to entertain a motion, I'll be glad to make it.
Mr. Chairman, the, the public hearing has not been closed.
Can I get a closed public hearing? Motion to close from Goode, second, Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Go ahead, Councilman Dingfelter.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Johnson Velez, for all your work on this. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, to suspend the sale of alcoholic beverages pursuant to Section twenty-seven dash three eighteen, City of Tampa Land Development Code for the property located at 1202 North Franklin Street, and specifically make, make findings that, based upon the evidence that we've heard from Tampa Police Department, Tampa Fire Rescue, as well as the citizens living adjacent to the property and observing firsthand the activities within the establishment known as Molee Abuela, generally from May, approximately the entire month of May really appears, according to testimony that we heard, May fifth through the end of May, May twenty-ninth, at which point it appears that the restaurant or the establishment closed down voluntarily. But anyway, based upon the evidence that we heard, I do believe that it's clear, clearly been established, and, and really, with all due respect, uncontroverted by the establishment's attorney, that, that they violated not only the city code in various sections, including twenty-seven, one thirty, and I'll get into that in a second, but also the, the mayor's executive orders, as well as the governor's executive as well as the governor's executive orders during the public health emergency. And specifically, specifically, I, my motion will include violations of Section 27-318, per N, per N B, which is that they have been maintaining a nuisance on the property, per N C, which is they've been engaging or permitting disorderly conduct on the property, per N D, that they've been operating establishment in a manner that repeatedly and on, and on an ongoing basis has negative secondary effects on the surrounding property, per N E, that they failed, failed to comply with the provisions of fire prevention ordinance, and I think that's, was as related to the fire escape issue, per N F, they failed to comply with certain health and sanitation ordinances of the city, county, and state, and then per N N, as in Nancy, that they violated other conditions of Chapter 27 that were imposed by city council pursuant to our alcoholic beverage code. And specifically, I would note that the evidence is clear, especially from the TPD and TFR testimony, that when they were warned, they repeatedly, day after day and week after week for the entire month, ignored those warnings. And that's as related to noise, as related to the size of their crowds, as related to drinking on the rooftop, and, and the other violations that have been alleged. So.
Second.
With that, I will make the motion, and I don't know if there's anything else that Mr. Shelby might suggest.
I would ask that, Mr. Chairman, that that is for the property. Would it be correct, Ms. Valdez, that the sanctions been imposed on the property?
On the property. Without regard to any particular special use permit.
You take that for me, Mr. Dingfelder, that the sanctions be imposed to the property?
Correct. I'll vote to North Franklin.
Mr. Shelby?
And also perhaps an effective date, when that 30 days should begin?
I would say effective today, for, for, what are we allowed? One month or 30 days? 30 days, starting today?
Today.
And, and also to put the property owner on notice, thank you, Mr. Goode's, for your second, to put the property on notice, that it is the city's opinion that there is no, when they, if and when they do reopen 30 days from now, that there is no, hold on, let me see what it says here, that there's no opportunity for, for drinking, here it is, use of the rooftop for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages is not allowed and must cease immediately. So, so I want to include in this motion that we are putting the property owner on notice that even when they might reopen 30 days from now, that the city, it's the city's position that they do not have permission, they do not have a license for the sale or consumption of alcoholic beverages on the rooftop.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder.
May, may I, may I ask for clearance? I, I think we ought to give a certain date, that's what we do at the racetrack, from this date, you got to say the date, what day, date, the 12th to January, whatever it is, the 11th, or whatever it comes in, but you got to give the date, I think, so it'll be clarity on the record.
A great idea, we just have to figure out.
I agree. It is, it is December 11th. I mean, this hearing started on December 10th and is now December 11th, so I agree with Ms. Miranda.
Now we have to figure out what's 30 days later.
I think it'll run at January 10th, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, because you have the 31st.
If everybody's in agreement with that, then this suspension would run until January 10th.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder. We have a second from Councilman Goode's. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The motion carried unanimously, with Carlson being absent.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if, just for the purposes of making sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, if we can, because this is the final action, just a roll call vote, if you don't mind, please.
Sure. We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, second from Councilman Goode's, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson, Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
The motion carried with Carlson being absent.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Ms. Valdez?
Yes?
Again, with these sanctions being imposed now, if we can make sure that we submit a copy to the state?
Yes, sir, we will.
Reference to violations of the, of the city, and also, we can look at in the future, again with sanctions, if someone is trying to apply and sanctions are imposed, or they, or they're on a suspension at the time.
Yes, sir, we will. Thank you very much.
All right. It's 12:30 a.m., and we have three more cases. Item number 18.
Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination, item number 18, file number REZ 20-85. It's for the property located at 2302 West Virginia Avenue. They're requesting to go from zoning classification RS 50 to PD for detached, single-family residential. I will defer to the planning commission if you'd please return to me afterwards.
Good evening, council members. David Hay with your planning commission staff. I have been sworn if I could share my screen, please? If I could share my screen? There we go. All right. In recognition of the late hour, I am going to be extremely brief. We're within the Central Tampa Planning District. Here's an aerial of the subject site, Virginia, it's south of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s Boulevard, east of North Armenia Avenue. The area is predominantly single-family detached, there's commercial up on Martin Luther King, and commercial on North Armenia. The subject site and all the properties around it are that residential 10, future land use category. There's more information within the submitted report, so if you have any questions, please let me know. But overall, the subject site would be developed with a similar form, height, scale, and lot pattern of the surrounding residential uses, and the planning commission staff recommends that the rezoning request be found consistent with the provisions of the imagined 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Hay? Mr. Manassi?
Thank you, sir. Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination. I'll put the site plan on screen for you. Again, item number 18 is REZ 20-85 for the property located at 2302 West Virginia Avenue. There were no waivers requested for this rezoning. They're requesting go from residential, single-family 50, RS 50 to PD to allow for the two single-family detached residential lots. The property is located on the southwest corner of the West Virginia Avenue-North Howard Avenue intersections, and the property contains two platted lots, lots one and two of block six of the Rio Vista Platte. The platted lots were originally orientated with lot frontage on North Howard Avenue, with each, each lot measuring 51.2 feet in width and 95 feet in depth. The proposed lot dimensions are 47 and a half, or 47.5 feet in width and 102.4 feet in depth for each lot. The proposed lot area is 4,866 square feet with a lot frontage on West Virginia Avenue. The required minimum lot width in the RS 50 zoning district is 50 feet with a 5,000-square-foot minimum lot area. Therefore, the only way for, to allow for these two buildable lots is to request the plan development, as lots have been in single ownership with one, will not meet the RS 50 minimum lot area requirement. The proposed setbacks for the single-family dwellings are front 20 feet for the main structure and 16 feet for the front porch, side 6 feet, and rear 20 feet. The maximum building height is 35 feet. Property is surrounded by zoning districts RS 50 to the, to the west, north, and east, and PD file REZ 1985 to the south, all consisting of single-family detached residential uses. Staff did do an analysis of the development pattern of the area. It's outlined in page three of your staff report. Going down through it, the original, or the, we took parts of the subdivision as well as the overall development area and conclude that down to the lots that are abutting, or the blocks that are abutting to it, as well as the lot face, and I'll read the last paragraph of that staff analysis on page three, pursuant to the review of the, the existing development pattern. The subject block contains 17 total zoning lots. 15 or 88% of those lots have been developed with a width of 50 feet or greater, and 2 or 12% have been developed with a, a width of 49.99 feet or less. The 2,300 block of West Virginia Avenue, which is both sides of the street, contains 16 total zoning lots. 16 of those lots have been developed with a width of 50 feet or greater, and zero have been developed with a, a width of 59.99 feet or less. Again, a total of 0% of the subject block face have been developed with a width of 49.99 feet or less. With that being said, staff did, we identified that 94% of the lots in the study area, 88% of those, 88% of the subject block and 100% of the block face and 23, in the 2,300 block of West Virginia Avenue are 50 feet or greater in width. It's staff's professional opinion that historical, historically platted lots were generally 50 feet in width, with the creation of two proposed 47.5-foot-wide lots would create an anomaly in a way that the study area was actually developed. Staff finds the proposed reconfiguration of the original platted lots inconsistent with the existing development pattern of the overall study area, block face, and block. There were no historic landmark structures within the 1,000-foot radius that we look at. Here's an aerial map showing the subject property outlined in red. There are, again, Development Coordination did find it inconsistent. There are site plan modifications should this be approved for natural resources and urban design, as outlined in the revision sheet of the staff report. And I'll show you some photos real quick of the area. There's the site. Site again, east side. This is the east of the site. Looking down Howard. Northwest corner of Kennedy. Looking at West Virginia. On Virginia. Northwest corner of Howard and Virginia. And the northwest corner of Virginia and Howard. Development Review and Compliance Staff has reviewed the application. We find it inconsistent with the City of Tampa Land Development Code. Please reference the findings by Development Coordination related to the existing development pattern of the immediate area. Again, if it's the pleasure of city council to approve this application, there are minor modifications that would be required between first and second reading, as stated in the revision sheet, and if you would please include that in the motion if approved. Staff is available for any questions you may have.
Mr. Chair, Councilman Dingfelder has questions.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Ryan, I appreciate the, the work you guys put into each one of these, but if they had, if they had left these lots facing Howard, it'd be 51 by 95 in depth. Well, two questions. One, why didn't they, why are they reorienting these? If it's, if it's 51 width and 95 deep?
It would, I mean, we'd probably have to talk to applicant, ask them why they were presenting, presenting it in this fashion.
But if they had? Then you wouldn't have had to do an evaluation of less than 50, but, but since they turned it 90 degrees, because they want to be on West Virginia, for whatever reason, it's still the same total square footage, the lot, the lot square footage is 4,866, it's 134 square feet short of the 5,000 required, which is only 3% less. So, so the whole evaluation is based upon that two and a half feet difference? They're two and a half feet, each of those lots is two and a half feet short?
Correct, sir. The, the reason for the conforming map, again, as you stated, is because of the insufficient lot width. Just looking at the plan, it, I mean, there is a possibility, if they were to cut it this way, that this, this access onto Howard may be, may not meet corner clearance. I mean, I could talk to Jonathan about that. But again, I think the applicant can explain why they proposed this rezoning in this manner.
Okay. I just wanted to, I guess, take this down to brass tacks, which is that each of these lots as proposed, has, is only 134 square feet short of the total, the total 5,000 required, and two and a half feet in width short. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. The applicant?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Vivian Hernandez, 17117 Lakeshore Road. I represent Mad Dog Construction, which is the current owner of the property. And to answer your question, sir, the reason why the property was placed, or actually the, the way that was divided, is because there is no water sewer running in, on Howard. So, we would not be able to build eventually what we want to do because of that. Now, we're asking for rezoning, there is, from a RS 50 to a PD, it was done previously in the home or in the property, in the rear, or actually in the south of this property. So it has been done before, and we will need, like I said, to subdivide it into two lots of 47 and a half feet wide by, and the setbacks to be six feet in order to fit the home. Now, the one in the corner, we were asked to move the driveway to the side, which was done, and that was provided. So, I can answer any questions you may have.
Councilman Goode.
And you said there's, there's no city sewer on Howard?
Correct. On Howard Avenue, there's no, no, no water sewer running there.
When you did the notice letter to the 250 feet? People within 250 feet, did you get any objection?
No.
Get any calls at all?
I did. I got a call from the lady, the neighbor across the street, just wanting to know, the house has been vacant for a while, and she just wanted to know, you know, if we were going to build two-story homes, and I told her, no, it would just be one story, and she was okay with that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Item number 18, REZ 20-85. Do we have anybody registered for this item? I don't believe we do.
No one has registered to speak on this item.
Thank you very much.
Move to close?
We have a motion to close from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Councilman Dingfelder, would you like to read this item? 18?
Sure. Get my act together. Okay. I'll move, I'll move in regard to REZ 20-85, following ordinance for first reading. An ordinance residing property in the general vicinity of 2302 West Virginia Avenue. In the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classification RS 50 residential, single-family, to PD plan development residential, single-family detached, provide an effective date. Specifically, I'll move the ordinance, and if there's any revisions, I, there.
Yes, there's a revision.
I would, my motion would include those revisions, as indicated by staff. I believe the applicant's met her burden of proof by providing competent, substantial evidence that the development, as conditioned and shown on the site plan, is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and the city code. Specifically.
Specifically, the planning commission staff has recommended approval. It's consistent with various housing policies to encourage new housing on vacant and underutilized land and specifically consistent with our land development code, section twenty-seven dash one-thirty-six, for proposed developments to promote the efficient and sustainable use of land and infrastructure. And even though the width is slightly less than what we require, fifty feet, it's two and a half feet less or, or five percent less than the required width, I feel the difference is de minimis and will not adversely affect the surrounding area.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Viera? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr.?
And the reason is that, aye, and the reason is that what's acceptable in some parts of the city and unacceptable in another, until at all the cities alike, I continue to vote no. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Councilman Gooz?
I didn't give my vote. I'm going to vote no as well.
Okay.
Let's do a roll call vote?
Yeah, let's do a roll call vote. Viera?
Yes.
Gooz?
No.
Dinkfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson, Citro?
Yes.
And Miranda?
No.
The motion carried with Carlson being absent and Gooz and Miranda voting no. Second reading and adoption will be on January fourteenth at nine-thirty a.m. Thank you very much. Item number twenty.
Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination. Item number twenty is file number R E Z twenty-eight-nine for the property located at thirty-two-oh-five West Arch Street. The request to rezone from RS-50 residential single-family to PD for residential single-family detached. I'll defer to the Planning Commission, and then please return to me.
Good evening, council members. David Hay again with your Planning Commission staff. I have been sworn. We continue our string of zonings within the central Tampa Planning District. Here we have an aerial of the subject site. You can see it's predominantly single-family detached around it. It's south of Interstate two-seventy-five and McFarland Park. It's north of Cypress, west of north of McDill Avenue. You can see here's the future land use map. The subject site and all the parcels around it in that tan color are the residential ten. You don't get down to a non-residential category until down to Cypress, which is represented by the pink color. Overall, the proposed rezoning would be developed with a similar form, height, lot size, and scale to surrounding residential uses. The proposed rezoning supports the comprehensive plan. It would not alter this portion of West Arch Street's character or development pattern. You do have our submitted report with additional information and policy guidance. If you have any questions, please let me know, and that concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Mr. Manassi?
Thank you, sir. Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination. Again, item number twenty is file number R E Z twenty-eight-nine for the property located at thirty-two-oh-five West Arch Street. This is a request, again, from RS-50 to PD for plan, uh, planned development residential single-family detached. There are no waivers being requested with this petition. The applicant, again, is proposing to rezone this to the PD shown on screen. The, the property is located three lots to the west of West Arch Street in North Matanzas Avenue intersection. The property contains portions of three platted lots, west half of Lot twenty-two, Lot twenty-one, and the east twenty-five feet of Lot twenty, Block nine, McFarland Park. The minimum lot area for RS-50 is, zoning district is five thousand square feet. The application requests for the two lots to be configured with each lot containing a lot width of fifty feet and a lot area of forty-nine hundred square feet. The length is ninety-eight feet, as shown on the plan. Given the existing overall lot area of ninety-eight hundred square feet, the way, the only way to request, to establish the lots is to request this planned development. The project proposes vehicular access on West Arch Street for parcel A and alley access for parcel B. The proposed PD setbacks for parcel A are front twenty feet, side seven feet on the east, nine foot on the west, and the rear twenty-four feet. The proposed PD setbacks for parcel B are the front twenty feet. Add a correction to the staff report, it's the side five foot on the east and then thirteen foot on the west and rear at thirty-two feet. The maximum building height is proposed at thirty-five feet. The property is surrounded by RS-50 zoning district in north, south, east, and west with single-family detached dwellings on all sides. The, there is a historic structure within a thousand feet of the subject property. It's George Gita Senior House, fifteen-sixteen North Renfrew Street. And I will show you the aerial map really quickly. I'll save you the pictures unless you'd like me to show you the staff photos that we took of the subject area, but all the houses that are surrounding this area are single-family detached dwelling units. And with that being said, the Development Review and Compliance Staff has reviewed the application, and we find it consistent with the City of Tampa Land Development Code. If you would, please reference findings by Development Coordination related to the existing development pattern in the immediate area. And I believe, I'm sorry, let me just make sure there was no revision sheet. I don't have a revision sheet, so the plan as submitted is, is, is good for planning staff for a second reading if approved.
Thank you very much, Councilman Citro.
Mr. Manassi, you said that this, this lot was only ninety foot deep or ninety-eight foot deep?
Ninety-eight foot, sir.
How many, how many other lots with, on this block are ninety-eight foot deep? I, is it consistent with the block that the, the short, two foot short?
I do not have the survey in front of me, and that might help me out determining the lots that are adjacent to it. It appears that there is that alley that's to the, the north of the properties, the asphalt pavement. So, this lot that would be over here would be most likely consistent with the same depth of these two lots. So, I would make the assumption that the, the adjacent lots are at the same length of ninety-eight feet.
Thank you, Mr. Manassi.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Mr. Robles?
Thank you, counsel. My name's Kevin Robles. I reside at twenty-one-oh-seven Chestnut Forest. Thank you, Ryan. You've done a nice job of explaining it. I don't want to add two items, and then I'll let the report stand. The one-site setback on the property to the west was adjusted to accommodate the preservation of a grand tree, and the, and the entire block is platted at ninety-eight feet deep, just for the record.
Any questions for the gentleman?
With an active alley. I have nothing else.
Any questions? No? Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Fred? No? All right. Do we have anybody registered on the, online for item number twenty?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
All right. Can I get a motion to close?
Yes.
Just for the record, is this a lot split?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Viera. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro to close. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Councilman Citro, would you mind taking item number twenty?
Thank you very much. Item number R E Z twenty-eight-nine. Moving ordinance being presented, first reading, and ordinance rezoning the property in the general vicinity of twenty-three-oh-five West Arch Street in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from district classification RS-50 residential single-family to PD planned development residential single-family detached, providing an effective date, as the petitioner has met the burden of proof. I also find that the compliance with the applicable goals, it is in compliance with the applicable joels, goals and objectives and policy of the comprehensive plan, more particularly consistent with land use policy one, excuse me, two-point-one-point-one and two-point-one-point-two, which encourages the use limited resources more difficultly, more effectively by encouraging infill development and vacant and underused land, and with the compliance with the Land Development Code, section twenty-seven dash one-thirty-six. Proposed development as shown on the site plan promotes and encourages development that is appropriate in location, character, compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods, as in all of them having a depth of only ninety-eight feet.
And, and Mr. Chairman, just to confirm, Councilman, that was thirty-two-oh-five West Arch Street, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Second? We have a second from Councilmember Viera. Roll call vote. Viera?
Yes.
Gooz?
Uh...
Dinkfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson, Citro?
Yes.
And Miranda?
Again, I will be voting no since this is a lot split and the whole city is not treated equally, only in certain areas will they pass. No.
The, the motion carried with Carlson being absent and Gooz and Miranda voting no. Second reading and adoption will be on January fourteenth at nine-thirty a.m. Mr. Manassi?
Sir. Develop, Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination. Item number twenty-one is file number R E Z twenty-nine-zero. It's for the property located at thirty-seven-eighteen North Thirty-first Street. The request to rezone from RS-50 to PD for residential single-family detached. I'll defer to David Hay with Planning Commission. Please return to me so I can finish.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, council members. David Hay with your Planning Commission staff. I have been sworn. We end the night in the central Tampa Planning District, where the subject site is located in the center of the aerial. This is north of Thirtieth Street, and then you have Lindell Avenue on the north side. The subject site and all the properties surrounding it are within that residential twenty. There is additional density further to the east with the residential thirty-five and single-family detached further south. Overall, the PD proposes an overall density of ten-point-eight-nine units per acre. Based on that and the policies within the submitted staff report, the Planning Commission staff has determined the PD provides for a comparable and compatible development pattern that would be of a similar form, height, and lot size and scale to existing development within the surrounding area. Based on that, Planning Commission staff recommends to you that this rezoning be found consistent with the provisions of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Any questions?
That concludes my presentation, and happy new year.
Any questions for the gentleman? No? Mr. Manassi?
Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination. Again, item number twenty-one is up file number R E Z twenty-nine-zero. It's for the property located at thirty-seven-eighteen North Thirty-first Street. Request, again, before use RS-50 current zoning, and they're requesting to go to PD planned development for residential single-family detached. And make a point to state that there are no waivers being requested with this application for the planned development. The property is located on the west side of North Thirty-first Street, three lots south of Lindell Avenue. The property is currently vacant and contains a portion of one platted lot, Lot four, Block B, Bethel Heights, less three feet. The detached single-family residence to the north, located at thirty-seven-twenty North Thirty-first Street, encroaches two feet into the historically platted Lot four, Block B of the Bethel Heights. In order to remedy this structural encroachment, the northern three feet of Lot four will be deeded to the northern lot. This will result in the subject property having a lot width of forty-three feet and a lot area of three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet. The minimum lot area in RS-50 is five thousand square feet with a minimum lot width of fifty feet. And again, the only way to develop this lot would be to propose the PD request. The proposed PD setbacks are the front twenty-six feet, side five feet, rear fifteen feet. The maximum building height is proposed at fif, I'm sorry, thirty-five feet. The property is surrounded by zoning district RS-50 to north, south, east, and west, west, the single-family detached dwelling on all, dwellings on all sides. The subject site is located in the east Tampa overlay and, overlay district and must comply with district design standards at the time of permitting. Staff analysis included five hundred and thirteen total zoning lots, four hundred and twenty-eight or eighty-four percent of those lots have been developed with a width of fifty feet or greater, and eighty-five or sixteen percent have been developed with a width of forty-nine point nine nine feet or less. Pursuant to the review of the existing development pattern, the subject block contains seventeen total zoning lots. Seven or forty-one percent of those lots have been developed with a width of fifty feet or greater, and ten or fifty-nine percent have been developed with a width of forty-nine point nine nine feet or less. These thirty-seven-hundred block itself of North Thirty-first Street, which is both sides of the street, contains fifteen total zoning lots. Two or thirteen percent of those lots have been developed with a width of fifty feet or greater, and thirteen or eighty-seven percent of them have been developed with a width of forty-nine point nine nine feet or less. The block face itself on North Thirty-first Street contains eight total zoning lots, and a hundred percent of those lots, eight of them, have been developed the width of forty-nine point nine nine feet or less, and none have been developed with a width of fifty feet or greater. That was a correction on page three of the staff report.
Mr. Manassi, read that last remark. You said none have been built with a fifty feet?
Sure. I'm sorry. And let me make the correction, too. On that last sentence of that staff analysis on page three, there is a correction. That's, I read the corrected part. I'll read it again. The block face, so, let me, I'm sorry, let me throw this on screen. I forgot to do that for you. So, what we're looking at, obviously, that total zoning lots, and we start pulling it down, and what I'm talking about now would be, before the last sentence was both sides of streets, and now we're going to talk about this block face right here. And as you can see, there are all this light bluish color, which indicates the forty-five to forty-nine feet lot width. So, my last sentence of my staff analysis, it states the block face, well, the corrected version states the block face of North Thirty-first Street contains eight total zoning lots. So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight or a hundred percent of those lots have all been developed with a width of forty-nine point nine nine feet or less. So, all of these less than that fifty, basically, and zero have been developed with fifty feet or greater. So, based upon that analysis, staff did find the proposed request for rezoning consistent with the existing development pattern in the immediate area. There were no historic landmark sites within a thousand feet. There was only site plan modifications requested by Development Coordination, and those should be shown on the revision sheet on page eight. I'll show you the aerial, just to give an idea of the area. So, here's Lindell, subject site outlined in red. And I do have staff photos, but in light of time, as I stated in the staff report, all the lots that are surrounding this property are single-family residential and either vacant or being used for detached single-family dwelling units. With that being said, the Development Review and Compliance Staff has reviewed the application. We find it consistent with the City of Tampa Land Development Code. Please reference the findings by Development Coordination related, related to the existing development pattern in the immediate area. And again, if it is the pleasure of City Council to approve this application, the minor changes as outlined in the staff report would be needed between first and second reading. Staff is available for any more questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may. Mr. Manassi, please indulge me. If we were to approve this, would that adjacent building that is encroaching two foot over, does that building become non-compliant?
Through the PD rezoning, the review process, we wouldn't allow to get to the point to where we create a non-conforming through this PD process.
Thank you.
Mr. Councilman Ryan?
I just want to make sure that all the lots are the same size as this. Isn't that a lot split then?
And I could show you on screen. I could bring up that conforming map again. I don't know. Let me zoom in maybe. That's not working too well. So, yes, sir. Your question was all the lots are the same. The, the two differences in the, the both sides of the street here are these two lots. They're vacant, but the remainder of the lots are all that width forty-five feet to forty-nine feet. So, when staff looked at the analysis, we determined through the percentage and the analysis of the, the total area, then breaking it down and coming down to the, the block face itself, found it consistent because these lots are all between forty-five feet and forty-nine feet.
The lots in the red area or the blue area, red area?
Uh, blue areas, sir, are forty-five to ninety-five. Oh, I'm sorry. Forty-five to forty-nine feet. And here's the subject site outlined in black. These two red lots are eighty to eighty, eighty to ninety-nine, and then a hundred plus. So, these are the two, I would say, anomaly, anomalies and...
All right. Thank you.
Not as consistent with the rest of the lots in that area.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Kevin Robles, I've been sworn in. I only have a couple of clarifications. The adjoining property to the north with the encroaching masonry structure was never in singular ownership. This PD is strictly to straighten out a situation where they were issued a building permit and the house was placed incorrectly on the adjoining property to the north. The, the simplest solution was to deed over two, three, two, three feet, two feet over to the adjoining property owner to bring both, to bring the lot into compliance and allow the development of this undeveloped lot.
All right. Any questions? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Are you in support?
I'm in support.
Do we have anybody registered? Because I saw that there was one name, uh, registered, but maybe incorrect.
There's a register, and it said it was the applicant. Well, doubt, we did not receive any registered speaker on this item, besides him.
All right. Can we get a motion to close?
Hey, Michelle?
So, move.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Viera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Councilman Citro, would you mind reading item number twenty-one? Councilman Citro, would you mind reading item number twenty-one?
Give me one second, please, Mister Chair.
Yes, sir.
We've been here for seven hours and you just now getting the computer up?
Be careful, I haven't made the motion yet.
He takes his time. It's an art. It's an art.
Good Lord, help me. Oh, going back to where I was, thank you. In, um, file number R E Z twenty dash ninety, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance rezoning the property in general vicinity of thirty-seven eighteen North Thirty-first Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RS fifty residential single family to P D planning development residential single family detached providing for an effective date as the compliance with the applicable goals and objectives and policies in the comprehensive plan consistent with land use policy two point one point one and two point one point two, which is encourages the use of limited resources more effectively by encouraging infill development on vacant and underutilized land and is in compliance with the land use, excuse me, land development code, section twenty-seven dash one thirty-six. Excuse me, the purpose, use promotes an effective and sustainable use of land and infrastructure.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Citro, Citro, with a second from Councilmember Viera. All in favor of the motion? Can you keep by saying aye? Any opposed?
The motion carried with Carlson being absent, second reading and adoption will be on January fourteenth at nine thirty a.m.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
It's one oh six a.m. and that concludes our agenda. We go to new business. Councilman Miranda, do you have anything, sir?
Yes, sir. One, I would like to make a motion to present a commendation to Stephen Lidle, who served on the city's budget advisory committee for approximately five years, three of which he was chairman of the committee. Stephen recently received a promotion of his work and will be relocating out of the state in early twenty twenty-one, this to be given in a deter, in a date in the future.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda and I believe Viera with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Councilman Citro, do you have anything, sir?
Uh, nothing. I'm just going to go home and eat a bunch of ice cream and go to sleep.
Why, why do you take my ideas? That's what I, you know?
I, I'm eating high test ice cream. Mister Chair, you're eating the low fat.
Councilman Dingfelter?
I've got three or four here. Uh, no, I'm just kidding.
Oh, thank goodness.
I'm good.
Councilman Goode's?
Mister Chairman, we need to thank, uh, Mister Crew. Uh, he celebrated his twenty-fifth year with the city, uh.
Hey, congratulations. Very good.
Nothing else, sir.
Councilman Viera?
I, I unfortunately got a couple. I apologize. I move for a commendation, if I may, for the family of the late Mister Bruce Burnham, who is known as the voice of Armwood and, uh, member of Vietnam Veterans of America seven eight seven. He recently passed on due to Agent Orange.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Go ahead.
I've, I've got a couple more, but I'll, I'll go through these just, um, uh, really fast. I, I saw that, um, we may have legislation in Tallahassee on preemption of the apprenticeship ordinance. We're going to look at it. I just saw it today, but I'll probably be motioning on that in a week or two, so just FYI in that regard. Um, then, you know, the, um, let's see here. And you know what? The rest, I'll, well, no, strike that actually. No, there is something just very, very briefly I want to talk about. It's, um, on that rule, I think it is five point four, I believe it is. The rule that precludes, um, people in the public from specifically mentioning city council members. I, I, I think we ought to reduce or get rid of that rule. It's never enforced and it, 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 it leaves the prospect of whenever it is enforced, that it's enforced, uh, let's say in reaction, I guess, if you will. Um, so I, I know, Mister Chair, that you were looking at making some, uh, rule changes, I think with a, an old memo that I did, um, when, when I was chair just before COVID. So I'd ask that that at least be looked at by our, uh, city attorney and just brought back to us. Because again, it's not enforced. It, it, it's, it's, I, I just think it's a silly rule, my opinion.
Second. All right, we have a second from Councilmember Dingfelter. All in favor?
If I can, Mister Chairman. Just for the purposes of the record, Councilman Viera, you're asking that, um, is it your request that the, uh, Chair look at, uh, changes to Rule five F relative to the comments shall be directed to the council as a body and not to individual council members?
Yeah, yes, sir. Not the one, yeah, yeah, if I may. And, uh, but that I be brought concurrently with the other changes as well.
Okay, so that'll be, so there's no date certain, but when it's going to be?
No, just.
It's going to be discussed frankly, I believe. It could be discussed frankly next week when we come back with that resolution about the, uh, it's going to be coming back.
Uh, we have a second from Councilman Dingfelter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
I literally have four more, but I'm going to leave them for next week, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I just have one thing. Uh, I have a memo from Roger Roscoe at F D O T. They were going to present, uh, next Thursday, but they would like to postpone it to a date in January, but we have only one regular meeting in January, correct? Mister Shelby?
I believe that is January
Sixteenth or eighteenth?
January, I'm so sorry, January fourteenth, Mister Chairman. And, uh, is that, did you want that, uh, presentation in, um, at, at a nine a.m.?
Yeah, right, right after public comment.
Right after, right after public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, um, is there a length to that presentation?
No more than ten minutes, but I don't, they may not even take that long.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We have a motion made by Councilman Maniscalco. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, by Councilman Miranda. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Well, and a happy Hanukkah to those celebrating and.
Thank you.
Move to receive and file. Second.
All right.
Is there, is that a motion to receive and file? I'm sorry.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Dingfelter. All in favor? Aye, we are adjourned. Good morning.